Okay, it's seven o'clock. I call the village new glares board meeting to order. Please silence all cell phones during the meeting. I look for an approval of the agenda.
I will approve you again.
Any all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. There is item three, public appearances and citizens comments on items not listed on this agenda. Items will not be debated or acted upon this meeting, but will be referred to the proper staff or committee if action is required. And please keep your comments a few minutes and shall we like to speak?
I assume I'll speak when you get to the capital improvement plan.
Okay.
Unless you want to speak now, I certainly can, but I just assumed I would be in conjunction with that.
That would be okay. Okay, item four, approval of the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Give me a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose motion carries. Item five, new business. Consideration discussion, special event permit chamber, Chris Kendall Mark event. Chris Kendall event December first to the third with application for temporary class B license. Didn't have a public works meeting, so this is coming directly to the board. So you are aware of that.
What did you say about me?
I said they, we didn't have a public works meeting last week, so this is coming directly to the board.
Are there any differences between this and last year's?
Nothing, is there, Becca? The same.
We're adding a police officer in our. What is this, is it for all the days or is it just without?
Friday, Saturday. Friday, the media count, three days, Saturday, day, and the eighth, and Sunday, and the sixth.
Since we're serving alcohol, it's a little crowded that we don't.
And you're covering that cost right back at the chamber? Yeah, okay.
I just have a question on that backup. Remember last year when they were talking about they needed extra people or extra trash bins?
Yeah.
And I noticed in the app that you had mentioned that the app, app, the trash would be minimal. Do you think we have it covered in terms of trash? Cause I know last year it was overflowing in some of those.
Yes, we have a dumpster that's going to be onsite this year and so going down to the chamber. And we're also going to be contacting the little groups about providing trash food. So it's like we do at all the other festivals, it's not maybe just.
Yeah, I know. And it was a, it was a landslide last year. No one knew that it was going to be that way. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Did you have motion of the shift?
Nope, I'm gonna hear him. I'm gonna go ahead and approve.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm voting present with lamentations.
What?
I'm voting present with lamentations. I just think this is a delicate responsibility. And I, I made a proposal, I just want to keep bringing it up. So I'm not voting against it, I'm not going for it. I'm voting present.
Yep.
Upstate.
And you heard some of the lamentations.
What the lamentation?
No, I guess I haven't.
Would you? What's a lamentation?
You know, wailing and lamentations.
You're wailing because of what?
I think this is unnecessary that these permits come to the board. It's decided by our best, our administrators.
I disagree. I just, I think.
They're still voting present.
Well, they, they, they came to the board because we did not have a meeting.
No, I, I don't think they, they'll never get beyond her desk and his and his, in my opinion.
But there have been many occasions.
Name one.
Many occasions where there have been things such as street closures that affected me that would have just slipped through.
Oh.
Okay, I know so someone needs to be aware of this that is concerned and is a representative of the various neighborhoods and residents, so you're
you can well, man, that all you wish, but it's anyway, it's a
Do you see that? I mean, I know we're
It's done, right?
Yeah, we've voted on it.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on. Consideration discussion operators license for Angel net hefty and Helen Beck. Are we, another thing that came directly to the board, okay?
Good. Okay. Motion approved?
You got a motion in a second?
You need a second.
Second.
Okay. Yeah, motion second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose motion carries. Uh, consideration discussion of utility cash flow analysis.
All right. So as you all know, the village has been working with Ellers to have a cash flow analysis for our utilities completed. And so John Cameron with Ellers is on Zoom today. He had another meeting at five, so had to be Zoom. So I will turn it over to John and he will please share his screen and provide presentation.
Yes, actually my colleague Kayla Thorpe, who is also on, is going to share her screen, if that's okay.
Yeah.
And post it. I'm, I got a new computer last week and for whatever reason Zoom is just not cooperating, so I'm zooming in from my phone. So thank you very much for allowing us to present virtually this evening. Normally we would love to be there in person, but Monday and Tuesday nights in Wisconsin, right now with the budget season is just as hectic as all get out. So our apologies on not being able to be here in person, but we are happy to walk through the analysis with you all and talk about the results of the cash flow for both the water, electric utility, as well as for the sewer utility. So Kayla, if you don't mind going to the next page. So really we're going to start with, you know, the why in terms of why are we here? And, and what are we looking at? What we want to make sure that we're, we're cognizant of is, is where you've been historically, financially for, for all three utilities, water, electric and sewer. Look at, you know, past financial performance, where you are now, how's it going now? And then, you know, what is the plan for both your capital and operating side of the, of the utilities? And what are we projecting out into the, into the future? So if you don't mind going to the next page. So that's, that's really what we're talking about here in terms of, are we, you know, from a rate performance, are we covering our costs? What we want to really hammer home from all three utilities perspectives is that the utilities are enterprise funds of the village. They are meant to act more like a business in that it's okay to generate net positive cash flow within these utilities because you know that year over year, your expenses from an operating and from a capital side are going to fluctuate. And you need to have adequate reserves to be able to cover those fluctuations over and above the revenue requirement for the utility. And then we're looking at, you know, really what, what are the projected capital improvement projects? How do we go about paying for those projects? And really what sort of impacts are we projecting? We may have to look at not only from the capital side, but also from the operating side for, for all three utilities going out into the, into the future. So we're going to start on the next page with the water utility. And what we like to look at going back to 2019 is the revenue requirement for the utility as the Public Service Commission would look at it. And that's on what's called the utility based method. And, and really what that means, the revenue, when we say revenue requirement, simply what we're saying is what is the amount of money we need to generate through our utility to operate it? So you can see that going across the page, the bars in orange are your annual historical actual operating and maintenance expenses for the utility, as well as your payment in lieu of taxes to the general fund. You then have from a capital recovery side, you're recovering depreciation and a rate of return within the utility. So depreciation in, in rough terms recovers the principal of an asset. So it's recovering the principal amount of the projects that the utility has paid for over time. So not necessarily items that were contributed through special assessments or impact fees or just directly installed from a developer as part of a new development. But rather those items that were paid for through utility rates. The rate of return in rough terms recovers the interest expense on an asset. And if you were to pay for an asset and not have interest expense, pay for it in cash. Rate of return is a measure of financial strength and health. And it is a signal of a utility's ability to go back and reinvest in itself. Okay? So Public Service Commission sets a benchmark rate of return annually. Right now that rate of return benchmark is at six and a half percent. It's, it's really equal to where existing interest rates are with some additional cushion built in for other inflation within the utility. So the pan bars going across the page is the annual depreciation expense for the utility. And then in green, that is the rate of return within the utility. So the purple line going across the page, that is the annual revenue requirement. And the blue line is your actual revenues coming into the utility. So what you want to see, you know, just simply is that the blue line is, is at or above the purple line. And you can see over time, really going into 2022 and 2023, we really start to deviate. You're really at about break even standpoint in terms of rate of return and depreciation expense. Out through 2020, we start to deviate going forward. So it's just kind of giving us a heads up before we, before we dive into the future and we start looking at budgets and, and future capital that you, you, you very well likely may need a rate case prior to talking about where we're going in the future here. Go to the next page, Kayla. Thank you. The other thing we're, we're wanting to look at is just from an operating, you know, standpoint, are we recovering our operating and maintenance expenses and depreciation? Again, are we recovering our O and M expenses as well as, you know, the depreciation on the, the, the assets that we have in service? And historically we've done a very good job of that. We dipped below the line in 2021, but that was a kind of a higher than normal operating expense year. And we, you know, kind of came back up in 2022. It's really where we start to then start factoring in rate of return on top of O and M and depreciation that we start to get below kind of where PSC would like to see you as a utility over, over time. So right now the benchmark rate of return is at six and a half percent, going back several years. Benchmark rate of return was, was really at five percent or just under five percent. And you, and you can see that your rate of return is really dipped over time. Again, kind of painting the, the, the story here that you're, you're really, you know, have the potential for dipping into reserves kind of going forward. You're, you're putting yourself in a position where the longer you go without considering a rate adjustment, the more you're going to be in line for some significant level of, of adjustment here. So I think it just kind of tells the tale that we need to, we need to take action.
Yeah, see John?
Yep.
On your first page where you said rate performance, you've got a green block there, which is a little complicated ROI, is that a target?
That is a targeted ROI, yes, that's correct. It's, it's calculated, yes, it's, it's a calculated number, but it's a target based on PSC's historical rate of return.
Okay, so that, okay. So this is meaningless to us. It's not, it's not, you're not telling us that's what our rate of return means, you're just saying that's what people get.
That's where, right, right. What we're showing is that you've actually been, if you look at that blue line, you know, you're, you're, you're just, you're, you're recovering your O and M expenses. You're recovering a hundred percent of your depreciation. You're recovering, you know, in 2023, you're at about one percent rate of return. So you're just not, you know, you're not, you're not recovering a hundred percent of where PSC would like you to be if you were to go in for a conventional case. Does that make sense?
Yes, just wanted to know.
If you go one more page down, thank you. So what this shows is the future water system capital improvement needs, as was provided to us to, to analyze as part of this analysis. So you've got approximately $6.7 million of planned capital expenses out through 2028 with the biggest, you know, set of improvements here coming up. Well, not necessarily biggest in 2028 is also a big year, but the, the first round of improvements that is coming up is, is next year with the water reservoir project. And you're, you're in line for some principal forgiveness funding through the safe drinking water fund program. But the other difference is you got roughly a million dollars in the pipeline for principal forgiveness funding, but the other 2.2 million dollars will need to be funded through revenue bond debt. And that's planned to be taken out through the state's safe drinking water fund loan program. What we're showing is that in 2027 and in 2028, with your next round of improvements, you will need to consider another borrowing. You really just are not, the, the utility is not in a position where from a cash standpoint, you could go out and, and cash fund these capital improvement projects. And these are, these are larger ticket projects that, that you have coming up here. So another round of borrowing really in the 2027, 2028 timeline. So from a roadmap standpoint, I just want to get that up on my screen because it's a little hard to see on my phone here. If you go to the next page, Kayla. Thank you. What we're forecasting is that you will need to go in for a conventional rate case, really in line with the capital improvement project, the well, the well reservoir project. As soon as practical, because right now to get through Public Service Commission's approval process takes about a year. So you're looking at, if you start now really having user rates in effect for roughly the fourth quarter of 2024, possibly sooner, but you know, if you're looking, needing these rate increases, which you are in order to close on the financing that you're planning to take out, the state through the safe drinking water fund program will require those rates to be in effect prior to loan closing. So it is something that, you know, we've talked with staff really at the outset of this process in terms of tasking us with saying, do we need to start this process and do we need to start it relatively soon? And the answer is yes, you do. We're showing the rate increase taking effect in 2025. I think it's likely that it'll take effect before that. But you know, from a few, you know, first revenue year, the increase would be 2025. And what we're projecting is a 35% increase to user rates coming into 2025 as part of a conventional case. And if you kind of make your way down the page, so total revenues from user rates are at the top. And you can see that increase with those, with that conventional case. We're showing the need for another conventional case, really tied with the second round of capital improvement projects in 2000, taking effect in 2028. So starting the process really in 2027 and kind of having that come up then in 2028. The kind of working down the, the page, we've got our total revenues really at the top. Our operating and maintenance expenses are projected to increase by roughly three percent a year going across the page. And then we have your payment in lieu of taxes or pilot payment. That's what the water utility makes to the general fund. Also taking into consideration in terms of expense. Yeah, from a debt service standpoint, you have existing debt. And then really if you're taking debt on in 2024, the first year that you would make payment would be in 2025. So new debt coming on really starting in 2025. And then again, a bump, a pretty significant bump in 2028 with the second round of capital improvement projects. And that really is what is, is necessitating partially, necessitating the rate increase in 2025. A hundred percent necessitating the rate increase in 2028. So pause right there before moving on to the next utility. And what, what sort of questions can we answer on the, on the water utility side?
Oh, definitely.
Okay. Oh, go ahead.
And then annual cash flow, you've got a million five in there, something like that? Add all those numbers up, right?
In terms of your net annual cash flow, yeah.
Over the next ten years, you've got ten, you've got over a million dollars in there, correct?
Correct.
What that means of that, are you going to tell us?
Well, that would go into your unrestricted reserve amount. But the other thing to factor in is that in 2029 and beyond, you have no planned, at this point, no planned capital improvement projects. That's just not realistic. Every utility has some level of annual capital of spending. So likely you'll, you'll put yourself in a position where you can start to cash fund capital expenses and not have to borrow from them.
Are you tracking that in this report? I didn't see it.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I'm tracking the reserve, the, the general fund reserve, what are you calling it? Did you track that in here?
Yeah, we do. It's, it's co-mingled, so you have a, a combined water and light utility. We do have reserves that are shown graphically in here over time. After this presentation, we'll provide you with the full cash flow report that'll have it in a non graphical form. So you can see exactly what that is projected out over, over time. But again, you know, from a net annual cash flow standpoint, what this is conforming to is the, the Public Service Commission's process for setting user rates. So we're not deviating from that process to produce excess amounts of, of cash year over year. This is setting, you know, showing you what these rate adjustments will need to be to meet that, you know, benchmark rate of return to meet the, you know, the future increase in your depreciation expense as well as, you know, projected operating expenses. What, what you do with that cash again is, is you're likely going to be doing other capital improvement projects than what you have on this list, particularly in 2029 and beyond. Any other question, questions on the water utility? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the electric. From the electric side of things, looking at the performance of the electric utility, the bulk of your expenses are operating and maintenance based with depreciation and rate of return still coming into play, but, but certainly it's, it's primarily operating based. This, this utility, you know, for the most part has been right at the line in terms of the revenue requirement. But, but as we'll talk about, your 2024 budget really paints the picture of, of needing to take some action on the rate side as well, within the, within the electric side. If you look at the next page, your operating rate show in terms of, you know, recovery of a hundred percent of your O and M expenses and a hundred percent of your depreciation expense, for the most part, has stayed above one, a one times level, which is what you want to see. You want to see recovering one times or a hundred percent of our operating and maintenance expense, a hundred percent of our utility financed depreciation expense within the utility with a slight dip in 2021 and then coming back up in 2022. The, the rate of return here for the, for the most part has remained positive. And again, you had kind of a, a one time blip in 2021. I don't know if those, that was an abnormal year in terms of expenses. It would seem to be the case where you would have negative net operating income and that net operating, negative net operating income as a percentage of your undepreciated assets and service produces a negative rate of return for that year. But you're back in the positive, not much in the positive, but back in the positive in 2022 with right around a two percent rate of return. But again, it kind of paints the picture that, you know, you're really, you know, at a spot where you need to start considering moving forward with your next rate adjustment on the electric side. If you go to the next page. In terms of future system needs, what is contemplated within this utility, as least as was provided to us through 2028, is about 700 and just under $730,000 of future capital improvement projects. With that breaking down to about 184,000 in 2024, 321,000 in 2025, about 40,000 in 2027, and about 179,000 in 2028. From a forecasting standpoint, what we're showing is that you, you may likely need to consider borrowing for your 24 and your 25 projects. So we've grouped that together into a single borrowing that would happen, you know, in 24 or in 25. And then in 27 and 28, really looking at a, a spot where you could cash fund those future improvements in terms of the transformer work, boom truck and the substation work. But it's possible you may need to consider borrowing for those as well. I'd, I'd like to say not, I mean, these are expenses that in an ideal situation, you're not having to borrow for. You, you are paying cash particularly for vehicles. But if you, if you don't mind moving ahead here, we'll, we'll start to talk about the, the reserves and that just the, kind of the cash flow situation within the utility. So if you, if you, thank you. On the next page shows the future cash flow analysis for the electric utility. In this case, what we're showing for 2024 is about 2.8 million dollars of revenues, budgeted revenues from user rates. And that's shown at the very top of the page with interest income and other income coming into the utility. Budgeted operating and maintenance expenses are about 2.7 million dollars. And then the utility, like the water utility, makes a payment in lieu of taxes to the general fund to the tune of approximately $183,000 that's budgeted for in 2024. That really puts you in a negative position before you even make your debt service payment. So, you know, this is, this is certainly something as we look at this where you'd say, well, you know, you really need to take action immediately with Public Service Commission in terms of considering a, a rate adjustment. And that adjustment, you know, again, we're showing and taking place in 2025. I'm not as familiar with how long it's taking to get through the electric rate case process. I, I think it's about the same length of time on the water side, but we just don't do as many electric rate cases. WPPI does the, the bulk of them across the state, so I'm not as familiar with how long it's taking. But, you know, forecasting in terms of just the need to, to kind of get to some semblance of positive cash flow, roughly kind of break even standpoint, at least a 20% increase to, to revenues through user rates is what's forecasted that would be needed in, in 2025. From there, it would be much more of an inflationary, inflationary increase. And that generates a rate of return that is higher than benchmark standpoint. So I would kind of point that out that I think it's going to be much more no rate increase for a period of time and then a, another increase that would be larger than an inflationary one in nature. But, but this would show you just, you know, from a break even standpoint, roughly, you've got some years of, of net negative cash flow, if you're going to cash fund capital improvement projects. For that reason, we may need to consider another borrowing in 2027 for your 27 and 28 capital needs. But it really doesn't put the utility in a position where you're generating huge amounts of positive cash flow year over year on the electric side. So again, I'll pause right there. And we can talk about the electric cash flow before we talk about the reserves of the utilities.
It, it seems like taking a huge increase in one year would affect people more than averaging out and spreading it over a few years. You've got a 35% 20, 25 for water and a 20% for electric in the same year. Can we average that out and start in 24?
Yeah, I, I totally agree with. Yeah, I totally agree with you that it would be nice to be able to do that. The, the thing to point out is that, you know, when you're adjusting rates on the electric and on the water side, that is a heavily regulated environment with Public Service Commission. They have, excuse me, a very prescriptive application process that, that, you know, when you're coming in, they're wanting to see you recover. they're wanting to see you recover your full revenue requirement. Again, the amount of money you need to operate the utility. They're wanting to see you recover a hundred percent of your operating expenses, a hundred percent of your depreciation and a hundred percent of your rate of return. You know, where, where you might have some leeway in trying to phase this is trying to convince them to a lower than benchmark rate of return. I, I don't quite honestly think you're going to be very successful in that. And, and really what this is telling you is if you, if you try to go that route, you're going to be in a position where you're going to have net negative cash flow year over year and until you eventually climb out of it. So you're, you're going to be dipping into reserves, uh, while you, you know, gradually work your way out of it. So it's kind of, do you rip the Band-Aid off now, which, which P S C would say yes, um, because of their, their process for going through a case, a conventional rate case, um, versus trying to do it over time, but it, it really doing it over time when you're in the hole comes at the expense of the, the reserves of the utility, which is, which is actually shown on the next page. And I'll, I'll wait to go there, just, you know, answer any other further questions on this page before we talk about the reserves of, of the water and electric utility.
Thank you. Well, I'm kind of curious in regards to like, if you go back to the water utility here, you know, you do the rip the Band-Aid off, do that thirty percent, because then you do like a seven point five for the rest of the next four years there. Because you're looking at doing another twenty percent in twenty twenty-eight. So if you do seven point five each year, you're going to make a little over twenty percent in that twenty-eight. And, uh, you should be running a net positive throughout everything there because you're taking money in before, you know, you start having more inflation on, on everything there.
Yeah, I mean, you are, you know, at about with some, you know, continued inflationary increase to revenues. You are at about a break even standpoint in twenty-five, uh, you know, really out through twenty thirty. It's really the twenty-seven and twenty-eight you're, you're drawing down because you have those capital improvement projects. You've got thirty-nine thousand of expenses in twenty-seven and about a hundred and eighty thousand in twenty-eight. Um, you know, if you, if you borrowed for those, you, you maintain cash flow, you know, you wouldn't draw into reserves, but then obviously your debt service payments would, would increase because you'd be paying, you know, paying that debt back over, over time. It's, it's really in twenty twenty, I'm sorry, in twenty thirty-one through thirty-three, where you're, you know, you're going back into the negative. But, um, I'm showing in, in the full analysis that from a rate of return standpoint, we still have a fairly high rate of return. So it's something that, you know, is going to require some active management out in the future. But I think the bottom line is for the here and now, you, you do need a, a larger than inflation increase going into twenty, you know, the end of twenty-four is really realistically when it's going to take effect, but really starting in two thousand and twenty-five.
Jonathan, did I understand you to just say we have a very high rate of return? I must have misunderstood.
No, it projected out with that rate increase, that twenty percent increase. Uh, it does, it does generate a higher than benchmark rate of return within the electric utility. And it's just because so much, so, so rate of return, the way that rate of return is calculated is you, you take your net operating income within the utility and it's a percentage of net operating income as a percentage of, um, your undepreciated assets and service. And when you look at the electric utility, a lot of your, uh, utility assets and service are, are almost fully depreciated. So it doesn't take much from rate of return to generate a high rate of return when you are taking your net operating income times a, a fairly small number. Um, I know that's, it's kind of hard to explain. It's hard to understand if you're not. Yeah.
We could put in the substation a five million dollars.
Well, that will certainly change it. Yeah. That'll, that'll definitely, uh, change it, increase your asset base.
I said, once we, when you include that, then we should get different, we should include that in this analysis is the, when does that go in, Joe? Is that on our books as of today?
The rate case?
No, not the rate case, whether it's a, it's an asset as of twenty twenty-three, right?
But it has to sit for one year. We have to take financials for one year.
If I remember right. Before you can go to the.
Before we do.
Yeah, but on our books, we're appreciating it as of this year.
Yes.
Right. So as of twenty twenty-three, we've got five million dollars.
Yeah, we should. Yeah, and we should update that in our analysis to help.
Do you rework this page, see what that means?
Yeah, I, I mean, to be honest, in terms of the, the rate increase, I don't know that it's going to have much difference on the rate increase. It'll bring the rate of return down to a much more manageable level. But what we're showing on the page, to be quite honest, is you need a hundred percent of what's shown in terms of these revenues. This is your cash expenses. These are, these are your cash revenues and cash expenses. These are, this is your actual operating and maintenance expense, your actual payment in lieu of taxes and your existing debt that's allocated to the electric utility.
So are you saying, Jonathan, that if we decided upon or talked with you about some sort of, um, how can I say, um, diluted, um, rate increase? We, we spread it out over years. All of that really is subject to the commission's approval, correct?
Correct, correct.
So, and it is your opinion that it is very difficult to get them to approve anything other than what's projected here in a very, uh, I guess, pro-commission environment, we know?
Correct. Yeah, it is a very prescriptive process when you come in for a rate case. Even trying to convince them to a lower rate of return, you have to have something like this, this cash flow analysis that would say, look, you know, in, in, I just did this yesterday with another community where they have, uh, revenue coming in from a tax increment district to help support debt within their water utility. And for that reason, we could show a lower rate of return. And that's what we would need to say, to bring to P S C to say, look, we have another source of revenue coming into the utility that you are not, um, necessarily aware of in the context of your conventional case process. And for that reason, instead of a six and a half percent rate, uh, rate of return, we can get by with a two percent rate of return or something like that. So in this case, you know, if you look at this just purely from a cash basis, which is what this page is, you need a hundred percent of what is shown on this page. And even that gets you just to break even annually.
Thank you.
No problem. If there's no other questions, we can go on to the next page. What this shows, so again, your, your water and electric utility, um, is a combined utility from a cash management standpoint. So when we look at reserves, we have to look at the reserves of both utilities, um, and, and compared to kind of some, some target levels. So I, I think the, probably the most frequently asked question that we get when we get involved with an analysis like this is how much cash should we have within our utilities? And a, and a, and a good target is six months of operating expenses and one year's worth of debt. And, and, and kind of the way to think of it is, again, from a, uh, recognizing that this is an enterprise fund and that it needs to be self-sustaining. If for some reason you couldn't collect utility bills for a period of time, say you had a cyber attack, um, where you were unable to access your utility accounting software, um, or something of that nature, or you had, you know, an emergency or you needed, um, you need, you know, you want at least six months of operating expenses in the bank. You want at least a hundred percent of next year's debt service payment in the bank. When we look at, so the, the bars going across the page is your, your ending, projected netting, ending cash balance over time. The, uh, orange, you know, kind of fill in and, and the dotted line going across the pages is your targeted cash balance that puts you in that six, six months operating, one year's worth of debt. You're below that line, you know, out through the, the time period of the analysis. We get closer and if we would run this out another couple of years, you, you know, you'd get there over, over time with these rate increases and what we're projecting out. But, but what it tells, tells us here for water and for electric is that we're really not in a position to go out and use cash to fund capital improvement projects. Because really what we're saying is, you know, we're kind of below a level that we should feel comfortable at. Um, you know, we should feel comfortable at six months operating and one year's worth of debt. We should, if we're above that line, we should take that cash and consider using it to fund our capital improvement projects and in decreasing our borrowing or eliminating it altogether for future. In this case, what we're showing is we're just not quite there yet and we need to keep working to get there. If there's no questions on that, we can move on to the sewer utility. Now sewer, given that it is unregulated in nature, we don't have to deal with our friends in Madison at the P S C. We could kind of look at sewer on a, you know, what we would call a cash-based method, where we're looking at, uh, your, your operating and maintenance expenses, your annual principal and interest payments on, on debt, as well as any sort of cash funded capital expenses. And, and again, that, that purple line going across the page is your revenue requirement. So a hundred percent of that revenue requirement and the blue line is your actual user rate revenue. And what that shows is coming into two thousand and twenty-three, um, you, you, you know, are really kind of at where, where you need to be uh, within the, within the sewer utility. But I know that, that's come with, you know, some, some rate increases along the, along the way. Um, if you go to the next page, Kayla, thank you, um, in terms of the reserves, um, you know, this utility is in a, is in a good financial position in terms of, uh, reserves, uh, where you are, you know, above the line in terms of your ending cash balance and equating it back to six months of operating expenses and one year's worth of debt. Um, you're also in a good position in terms of debt coverage. And what debt coverage means is on any existing revenue bond debt, you have to be able to demonstrate to bondholders, uh, that your revenues coming into the utility are, are sufficient to pay our, our operating and maintenance expenses first. And then, you know, roughly, um, a hundred and ten to at least a hundred and twenty-five percent of our annual principal and interest payments. And your, your, you know, that purple line is the amount that is available, uh, for those, uh, to meet debt coverage. And it is well above the minimum, uh, recommended number for, uh, debt, debt coverage.
Jonathan, you is, you're using two different formulas here for reserves. One is you said six months revenue, now you're talking about six months revenue plus one year of, uh, principal and interest.
No, I'm, excuse me, six months of op, yeah, I'm sorry, misstated, six months of operating expenses and one year's worth of debt.
For both, that, that's the formula.
That's the formula.
Okay.
Sometimes I just, I just keep rambling down the train and the wrong words come out, so sorry about that. Um, if you, if you go on to the next page in terms of looking at your, uh, future capital improvement, um, projects, what we, what we looked at was, was started with, um, trying to consider whether we could cash fund the expenses that are planned for within the utility, which is about, uh, one point six, uh, almost one point seven million dollars of future capital improvements, uh, with, you know, most of that in twenty-seven and twenty-eight. And when we looked at that relative to, again, that, that benchmark standard of six months operating expenses and one year's worth of debt, we fell below the line, um, in, in twenty, uh, twenty-six and twenty-seven. So, uh, what we're forecasting from a planning standpoint is that you would need to consider borrowing for your twenty-six and two thousand and twenty-seven capital improvement projects. But you could consider cash funding the, uh, Eleventh Avenue Reconstruction Project in two thousand and twenty-eight. Um, if you go to the next page, um, what you have forecasted in your budget is, uh, about one point five million dollars of total revenues from user rates in two thousand and twenty-four. That is a, a jump over where you were in two thousand and twenty-three. I believe there was a rate increase that was put into effect that, you know, really would kind of ramp up here and, uh, really you'd see the full force of that in two thousand and twenty-four. So we're not planning on a new rate increase other than what you have already, you know, in place and budgeted for, uh, as part of your two thousand and twenty-four budget. What, what I am suggesting, however, is in two thousand and twenty-five, uh, you may need a, a five percent increase to, to user rates, uh, within the, within the sewer side. Um, the, kind of working down the, the page, um, in terms of the, the one item I want to point out, so set up the same way as the water and electric utility in terms of your revenues from user rates at the very top, your interest income and other expense or other income coming in mainly late fees, um, shown below revenues from user rates. Uh, so you've got your total revenues kind of running across the page with the line going across it. And then below that are your expenses with your operating and maintenance expenses, uh, shown running across the page out through two thousand and thirty-two. Uh, your budgeted O and M expenses are shown in two thousand and twenty-four and then that's jumping at three percent a year, uh, out through two thousand and thirty-two. And, um, your, uh, existing debt runs out fairly stable through two thousand and twenty-eight, then does start to fall in two thousand and twenty-nine. Um, future, eh, eh, principal and interest payments would start in two thousand and twenty-seven and run out, you know, steadily over, over time. So, um, not necessarily forecasting any need for a rate increase beyond two thousand and twenty-five, but roughly, you know, a five percent increase that, that might be needed. And that could be evaluated coming into the, you know, into next year's budget season as to, you know, are we seeing the O and M expenses that we're seeing, or what are we seeing from revenue standpoint? Um, you, you may be able to dial that back. You may have to, you know, you may have to, to tick that up a bit too. So any questions on this one?
Yeah, on the one hand, you're saying we can use cash in two thousand and twenty-eight. On the other hand, you're saying we're on a six hundred and thirty thousand dollar loss in two thousand and twenty-eight.
Well, you, you do have a, a, a net loss for the year. That's because you're drawing down cash with those capital improvement projects. But your, your reserves in terms of your net balance for the year staying.
You told us we could use cash right there and then you're saying it's a loss.
It is a loss for the year. You're, you're essentially dipping into, into your reserves to be able to fund those capital improvements. And we're showing that, um, you'd still would be.
Jonathan, you're expensing the capital improvement in one year.
Correct.
Why?
Yep. And, and. Excuse me?
Do you expense a capital improvement in that amount in one year? Why do you expense it?
Well, it's, it's occurring and, and from a cash standpoint, it's occurring in that you're, you're drawing your cash balance down to pay for it. We're showing you can fund it with cash. We're showing you don't need to borrow for it.
You're treating it as an expense when it's a capital improvement?
We're not treating it as an.
We don't, we don't have to make this right now. I just, I, it concerns me when you start taking something that big and saying we're going to expense it in one year.
Well, how else are you paying for it if you're not paying for it with?
Uh, that's a different question. How do you pay for it? Question is whether you're expensive in one year or you depreciate it over many years.
Well, we'll depreciate over many years, but this is showing, this is showing your cash, your, your cash flow analysis on a true cash basis. Total revenues from rates, total operating and maintenance expenses, total capital, uh, uh, debt service payments and capital improvement expenses.
I think you overstated the case.
Okay.
If you ask, if you ask the people here whether they believe me or they believe you, they believe you.
I, I appreciate that. I, I think, you know, from a, from a, an, uh, cash flow standpoint, this is showing, uh, funding this asset with cash of the utility, which would be a, a drawdown because you just don't have that amount of revenue coming into the utility for, you know, in that particular year. But, but it, you're, you're essentially drawing down your unrestricted fund balance, which is shown at the bottom of the page for that year. You're then building it back over time, but you're, you're drawing it down, you know, in that, in that year.
Well, what it does, it pushes you in the direction of saying rather than spend cash, you should borrow.
Well, that's the, that's the flip side of the coin. If you don't use cash for the asset, you're going to borrow. Correct.
Uh, this is, this is useful information you're giving me. Thank you.
Yeah, no, no problem. And we're trying to answer the question and not, you know, trying to be adversarial at all. Um, the, the final page shows the rate impact analysis for, for all three utilities. And, and really what this is just trying to show for the average you, uh, residential rate payer, you know, kind of where you are now, um, for your water side of your bill, the sewer side of your bill and for the electric side of your bill. And I realize this could fluctuate depending on your individual circumstance. I know for me, I have four kids at home. My water bill is very high, uh, compared to, to some others who, uh, would be, you know, far less than that. But just trying to give you a sense for if these rate increases do take effect, what they mean for the customer on a monthly basis and then kind of extrapolating that out on an annual basis. Um, so I won't necessarily go through that line by line, but you can kind of take a look at where, you know, So I won't necessarily go through that line by line, but you can kind of take a look at where, you know, what the impacts are. If you did have to do something in, you know, twenty twenty-five on the water side of a, you know, on a magnitude of a thirty-five percent increase, it would be just under a fourteen dollar, you know, impact monthly to the average customer's bill. And you, you, you can see the, the same, you know, for future rate increases. And then on the sewer side, same thing, you know, in terms of a roughly a twenty percent increase. And then, uh, yes.
This is Peggy. Um, if I look at this, um, these, tell me if I'm calculating this correctly. If I look at two thousand and thirty-two and the monthly increases from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and thirty-two on every utility, is, am I doing this correctly by saying that approximately seventy-five dollar increase per month? For the residents, would that be of just kind of a ballpark or is that a not a way of calculating this? You know, if I look at from thirty-nine, let's look at, if we look at water, it's thirty-nine and a half to sixty-nine and a quarter.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's about, that's about right because you're, you're about eight hundred and eighty-three dollars over the kind of that ten-year period of time. So, you know, it's right about eighty bucks. So you're, you're, you're correct.
So you're looking hovering near nine hundred dollars for a resident per year increase by two thousand and thirty-two? Would that be right if I added those? Okay.
Between water, sewer and electric, correct.
Okay, I just wanted to have that number. Thanks.
Yep, yep, nope, that's a good question. So this is kind of the end of the presentation. Happy to answer any future questions or if there are further questions, rather, excuse me. The next step here would be that we'll send over the, the final packet that'll have all of the detail behind the PowerPoint presentation this evening. So are there any additional questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yep, I know I've thrown a lot at you. I think kind of from an action step, I think the biggest thing for both electric and for water is to, to begin that conventional rate case process. You know, soon, very, very soon for, for both.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Take care.
Thanks, thanks, John.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Can I have mine bronzed or something?
No action is needed.
Okay, I indeed, and rate consideration discussion update on library project.
Yeah, so I wanted to invite Amy to come give a quick update on what's going on with the library project. Given that the library is a big piece of our next agenda item, the capital improvement plan. And I know there's been some discussion on the library, but I just thought this might be a good time to update the village board. Where do you want me to be? You can sit here or you can stand there, whatever.
Okay.
Okay, so I wrote up some notes just so you can follow along. I'm kind of going back to recap. Some of you may know this about the history of our search. Some of you may not. It's on our website, but in June of two thousand and twenty-two, the library and Swiss Church began discussing the possibility of the Zingley House. We met over eight months with representatives from the church and the library. And we also met with the village administrator and Scott Jelli as well. Basically, questions were answered. And in February, the church took a vote based on the potential options, and they voted it down at this time. So there's a team that property. And the board continues to search for the downtown or near downtown site. Ideally, the library board wants one point five to two acres is what they're hoping for. And the reason for this is they'd like a larger library and parking if possible. They would however, consider a downtown site with street parking. It's just whatever we find.
Does your number here include cost of the land?
Which number are you talking about?
Three point five to construct a similar sized building in two thousand and twenty-six. Does that include the land cost? Do you have to buy land?
Right.
It's not in here, is it?
That, no, I don't have that included in here.
Yep.
Because at this time, we are retaining the thirty-nine property. At some point, we will sell that. So.
It's, uh, when it comes to then is three point eight, right?
Um, with, I'm sorry, you're ahead of me.
Yeah, you were way ahead of me.
Okay.
Slow walk.
Okay.
Guard.
Okay, I'm going to go back to where we're currently at. As of September thirtieth, we have one million, one hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. About a million of that is in the CFSW capital accounts and a hundred and sixty at Lake Ridge. That's on the first page. So I wanted to go back to the CFP numbers. I think at one of the board meetings, there were some questions about where that those CFP numbers were coming from. We decided to take the estimate that we have from two thousand and twenty-one for the six to seven thousand square feet on the Tenth Street property and work from there. So it was estimated at two point two million dollars at the time. So I researched the construction cost index for two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two and future years. And the estimate came to three point five million. The construction cost indexes are listed below. So two thousand and twenty-one was twenty percent post-COVID. It was really high. And now it's starting to level out again. Preliminary engineering costs in two thousand and twenty were at thirty-eight thousand. Twenty twenty-one, it was thirty-two thousand. So there was a drop. But we've increased our estimates for those costs to forty-four thousand just for inflation and fluctuation costs of all the things listed there. We've also added three, three hundred thousand dollars for after construction costs. And those are furnishings, window coverings, et cetera. A cost of thirty-five dollars per square foot and ten dollars per square foot for shelving. Those are also generous. And I got those numbers from SCLS. So let's see. And I guess looking at if we were to construct a seven thousand square foot building and we were to say it costs five hundred dollars per square foot to construct something commercial like this, that would put us at about three point five million. So I feel like we kind of confirmed it that way. So again, we're on the generous side for all of our estimates. Likely by the time this comes, because we're only through two thousand and twenty-four, it will be more than three point five million. But it's hard to say. So fundraising, we plan to continue the fundraising process. There are people who have said that they have money that they'd like to contribute, but they need to see concrete plans or shovel in the ground. Some people have said as well. Currently, I'm doing some background research on capital campaigns, phases and strategies. I'm talking to library directors across the state who recently constructed libraries, finding out what worked and what didn't work for them. And let's see, okay. Moving on to operations costs. Operation costs for a standalone building, I think, are likely to be higher. I mean, I can't, I mean, I'd be lying to you if I said it wasn't going to be higher. We are looking for ways to bring down or keep down those costs, looking at solar energy. There are three libraries in the state, McMillan, Merrill and Albany currently have them. McMillan is being, is funding seventy percent of their electrical costs right now through their solar panels. I'm also looking at the Renew Wisconsin Initiative and just to see how that might help us as well. So I'm in the preliminary stages of that research. So but I know that it could benefit us. Just to how much, we'll have to find out. Staffing, with regards to staffing, I feel like our library visits to the three libraries in September really demonstrated how important sightlines were in our design phase. Because if we can keep those sightlines open, we can operate with the staff that we have. I feel as though we are really in a better situation than Belleville. And I think that's because of the village board allowing us three full-time employees. And that's going to be really helpful if we create those good sightlines. We're not going to have any problem staffing a library with the staff that we have currently. Let's see. Oh, also from three library visits. Generally, when you build a new building and it's larger, you'll add more patron computers and technology. What all three libraries are finding is that they don't need those extra computer stations. So that's, we're not going to be charged as much from SCLS. So Verona, they went ahead and increased their computer stations. And now they're underused and they haven't made any efforts to reduce those for now. But it's something they're considering in the future cross planes is reducing. So they built their new library, they increased the computers, and they're going to cut back. Belleville built their library. They started out with the same number of computers that they had before with the intent of bringing it up. And now they're not going to bring it up. And they're even considering dropping a computer station. So we can save funds there. And the reason is most people are bringing in their laptops or their iPads. There are very few people who are coming to use those computer stations. So during the Tenth Street planning, the town had pledged twenty thousand dollars towards operation costs for the first two years. We'd have to revisit with this with them to see if that's something that they'd be willing to partner on us with. So I really, I have very little notes on this. I don't know if you all remember more on that or not. We also received county funding from the town of Exeter and the town of York. They might be willing to support us in this. Currently, the town of Exeter is in their final year of donating to the capital campaign. They pledged for four years to donate a thousand dollars. And they're in their final year of that right now. And they might be willing to help there. After the capital project is complete, we might want to look at the possibility of building on our three thousand dollars seed money in our endowment fund as a resource for additional funding for operations. The other thing is we have operational reserves in the amount of forty-eight thousand dollars. And we also have slight surplus from the time we were without director and without one of the insurances. So that money could over, be spread over a course of years to bridge that gap in operational funds. Finally, um, both Lauren and I have been looking at USDA loan and grant opportunities. So we both have talked to Koo in Stevens Point. Essentially USDA grants can't be used for construction. Rural community needs exceed the funding. I guess there's three hundred to six hundred thousand dollars annuals. So that annually, so that's more for equipment purchases. There are two types of loans that we could consider through the USDA. If we went this route, it would be the general application loan, just twenty low, twenty-year loan or the forty-year loan. And that would decrease the payments significantly. It would be a situation where we would lease from the village.
The number of sixty percent.
What?
You can borrow sixty percent more, same annual cost if you use a forty-year amortization.
Okay.
So if you were borrowing two million EO here versus three point two if you used USDA.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Same, same annual payment, same annual payment.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Basically.
So Belleville currently has the forty-year loan. And in order to take advantage of that, they had to create a CDA. The village of New Glarus does have a CDA. So if it was created within the last five years, we'd have to do some additional paperwork. I don't know, a five by five waiver. I don't know what that means, but I'm assuming it's not too hard. The CDA then would apply for the loan on behalf of the village and village would lease it for the property for the libraries, how that would work. The, the key is, and if you have a better understanding, let me know. The site on which we built would need to be declared a blighted site. So basically the USDA wants to help rural areas improve areas that are lighted or marred in some way. And in order to do that, it needs to be declared lighted first. The village attorney could help establish this. And anyway, the, some questions that we have are, are, are flood plains included in that? Or our TIF districts? Does that apply to any of our TIF districts? I don't know. So that would be further reach, research. There's follow-up paperwork that goes along with the slar, loans servicing specialists review it quarterly and then annually. And they do that for three years. After three years, if everything looked good, they might reduce that to just annually. Who said the benefits are there are low interest rates, feasibility review, environmental reports. Basically, they make sure this is, this project's just going to work. So that is a positive. Architectural firms can do those environmental reports for us as well. They did stress that the USDA is the lender of last resort. Commercial loans are encouraged if possible, but in rural areas with big budget projects like this, like it happened in Belleville, sometimes they're needed. They do encourage villages to consider refinancing at some point if they're able to reduce the life of the loan. Yeah, otherwise we are sending out a letter later, early next week to all previous donors to the capital campaign. So those are just being printed right now, just to keep them posted on how things are going. And I think
Me having, having been on this road before, there's a couple of things I was thinking about since we discussed this last time. I was looking at the complex that the school district was going to build via athletic complex. And they talked about having a large community center there that the communities could use. And I know one of the things the library was considering was, you know, a community area. And that, I'm not sure how you would take that into consideration, but you might take that into consideration as usage. And, you know, we go around and around, but we have gone around and around. I don't remember all the requirements at the tennis courts. I mean, I just happened to pass by those the other day. And that was also a possibility of a location. I don't know. I can't remember all the, you know, all the specifics about that. The other thing I thought about was the township building here that is being evacuated eventually. That might be a, a village hall, you know, site for offices. And this could be the library, the footprint is already here. I'm not sure how far out we would be legal, you know, we could go. I don't know if that will give you the footage, but there are just some things I was thinking about.
Yeah.
There's an engineering study of this building done separately. Have you seen it?
No, I haven't. Well, I've seen the file. I have not gone through it.
It wasn't a very flattering statement.
Like everything would need to be redone essentially. Yeah.
You're not gaining much by using this.
Yeah.
Just, just touch it.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying that whether you, I don't know whether you start from scratch or what have you, but it would be in the village. I'm just throwing things out there.
So, right, I think the library board would be really open to any suggestions or thoughts that you have. We'd really like to work alongside the village to get this accomplished for all those people who donated already. I mean, it's been a long time. And yeah, we'd be open to ideas. We, so and you're all welcome to library board meetings whenever you want to come in.
I know you touched on this, but you didn't really know anything about it. The USDA loan grant research part where the site on which we would build would need to be declared, be declared blighted.
Right.
Is that, is that more like the place that you're currently at?
No, it's not currently. It's the one you would be purchasing. No, it's not currently. It's the one you would be purchasing to build upon. So like in Belleville, it was an old feed mill. That's what was there before the library. It was determined that that site was blighted and therefore they would be
That in line with condemnation or something like that?
Um, I don't, I don't know.
Not that severe.
Not that severe, but it's like step mode.
It was one of the things that was attractive about the Swiss um, buildings, first building was, there's a two million dollar rehab just to make that thing usable. And you know, that, that, that by definition is, it's uh, it's a negative number. So you gotta, you gotta you gotta look at it pretty carefully to do that. But Belleville really drew an inside scrape. They had this building right there where the railroad track used to be and nobody was using it anymore. It was easy. It, it is an expensive process to use that S D A. USDA loan. It has pluses, the sixty percent more money for the same annual cost and a very low interest rate. But over here, you've got a considerable number of expenses that go with that. And this business of providing quarterly reports and all that kind of stuff. Um, Drake was very turned off by it. And, um, I know in Belleville, you know, they got that expanding tax base all the time so that they've gone through the application. Within a year or so, their tax base was enough. They could have borrowed the money commercially, so to speak. And then they were kicking themselves because they were already in it. But it certainly is that sixty percent making your two million worth three point two million. It is interesting to say the least.
Right.
And it's not to say we have to do it. It's just researching different options to be able to make this. Yeah.
You know, it's just like, these are additional possibilities.
I, I, the thing I didn't know before was, uh, the, uh, construction plans. For the shepherd of the all sites and a building six to seven thousand square.
With rent for expansion. Yeah. So they plant, they wanted to ensure to expand on that property whenever they could, but.
So the, okay, gotcha. And how many square feet goes to Belleville? Thirteen thousand square?
Thirteen.
How do they feel about their size?
Um, they feel good about their size. Um. Yep, they're using all of their space really well. It's well laid out. F E H design did it and they laid it out with the sightlines and.
I know when I, I toured there and I, and when I toured Broadhead and I don't know if she's still there, the Broadhead director told me that she thought their library was too big.
Yes.
Way too big.
Probably Angela.
Yeah. And then the Linda Schmidt at the, I think that was her name, the director. She was a former director of the Belleville Library. Um, and she said that, um, she thought that was too bad for, for, so I'm just throwing it out as options, but, um. You know, I know you have a lot to think about, but
Right.
Maybe looking at other possibilities. I, I don't know. You know, I, I have never ever given up on this building because I think there's some technology out there that might be a possibility, but you know, we've done the research with whatever contractors we've suggested, but I've often thought that there is something we can do here, but that's just my opinion. So.
Right, right.
I, I think you back into this building as a community center. So that you're not taking up space in the library or community rooms. You know, that's what goes on in Belleville is a huge there are two really big community rooms. The one coming in off, as you come in, that's just.
I don't know if you've ever listened to Deb Carey, uh, who submitted a letter long ago to us and said that um, Belleville or New Glarus has enough community rooms. And if the new uh, sports complex goes up, they're going to put in a huge community room. So I'm just, I just want to make sure that we, you use your space wisely to afford it, et cetera.
So things.
I just think you, you really got to find that engineering study for this. It was, this building was built cheap from the beginning. Uh, the construction process of it. And I know that the engineers were very concerned about footings for it. And if you're going to start putting a bigger, more library space on it, it's a, find that study because I think that'll
I remember.
Give us a clue about whether this is a viable enterprise or not.
Okay, I remember looking into that.
Yeah, I'm looking at that.
One thing about the community space that you're talking about at other locations is when we record stats for D P I and we're looking at the money that funding we're getting for the following years. We have to record whether it was an onsite um, event or whether it's offsite. I don't know how that affects our funding. That is one thing. The other thing is, is we start doing offsite events and programming that really increases the drag on staff so much more. If like the community room were able to set it up and taken down and it's right here, even so, everything has to go in and out of the storage room. Every single time if we had our own community room space or children's programming space that really alleviates our staff.
I, I think that's pretty fundamental. It's have space for children, right?
Right.
Right. I distinguish between those two. You got to have a space to do that. Those presentations and stuff that are easy for you to use. Absolutely.
Right.
It is different. All the plans coming down so far always had a separate room for a community space. And that was the one I was always concerned about. It's a lot of money for occasional users.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Good point.
Often do you use that community room for?
A lot, all the time. We use it constantly. Like how many times a week? I don't know.
I'd probably say on average, three to four times a week. And that doesn't always mean large events. And if you think from Scrabble to music with Corey, but I, I would say three to four times a week.
So we use it three times for sure for children's programming. We have Delson recruit every week. Scrabble, that's five already. Um, and then we have.
I mean, yeah, some of the things are smaller than they could be in here, but it's just easier.
So are we going to give our librarian a sound barrier in that room? So she has a prayer of conducting her presentations.
Soundproof?
Not proof.
Well, that's, that's a good point you bring up because this really has become the libraries in a sense, so that the people want to use the community room would, uh, for some other event could possibly use that one. So this could be this could be, or it has become essentially the place where the library overflows to.
I think there's a drawn feeling that people want it near downtown or downtown. And I think with that consideration, you have to plan on it being two-story. They're just not going to be available property downtown to meet the size on one level. So I think you just have to say.
It's eleven thousand square feet where the township is right now.
What is it called?
Eleven thousand. Plus there's another two thousand between the sign and the road because that D N R still owns the entryway, going back to the days when that was the railroad station.
I know.
And there's another intersection over there with, that the church owns, which is I don't know, maybe twenty feet by the length of the building. So I, I think there's more than enough space there, Larry.
That allows space for parking?
Every foot counts.
And you can do two stories. Because the land does this. And if you put the building like this, it could end up with this space here. I think it's, it has real potential.
I like that site. Right across.
And it's obviously going to be difficult. You can make the argument all day long that that's a derelict building and no one's going to believe you. Because it looks good.
And you've got to put a clock on outside the library so I can see it from where the bank sits. There's got to be a clock downtown. You can read Swiss church clock. I can't read it.
I think.
It's not reliable.
But I, I agree, this is very high.
The giants are, it's a high curve in the temperature.
Lowering ones at clock.
Would the town hall space allow for any onsite parking?
I would think no.
Just as taking off the clerk hat and putting on a parent hat, small kids on a festival weekend, I don't want to have to like battle festival parking or downtown parking in general to try to get my kids to a library event. So I think that'd be, I mean, obviously here we don't have a lot of onsite parking, but this is, I think, just far enough off of that, that there's still parking available and we have all this long road here. So that would be my concern.
Can I comment this from the point of view of what is listed over here is grants and donations? Well, I, I think the number you gave was a million, one hundred and sixty thousand or something like that.
Yes.
Uh, plus you can add in more or less a hundred and twenty thousand for interest between now and then. Um, I, I, I keep coming back with um, numbers between thirty and forty percent that we're asking the public to put in. And I think that's a big lift for us. I think we really got to think in terms of twenty-five percent is public money and seventy-five, or is of donations and, and, um, and seventy-five percent is our piece.
Well, I have to be honest with you about, um, you know, we have borrowed one, we have allocated to you one million. Um, in all fairness to the villagers with, you know, the number of things that we've increased and the number of responsibilities that the residents now have in terms of, uh, in terms of payment. I would, I, it would be a tough sell for me to ask them for another mill without having them put input into it. So if we had a referendum or something where we asked them, would they want to? I just cannot in my heart throw that at them at this particular time. That, that's my feeling. Um. So if we had a site and we decided with the monies that we had and we were rolling along with donations, um, I, I think that it would be an easier sell for me.
You're, you're not.
I mean, in terms of the residents, if we did a referendum and they, and they, you know, agreed because it was actually getting some fire into it. Um, I just, I, I have I think it's a lot to ask of the resident.
You've got eighty thousand dollars in here for Candy Cane Park. Are you going to put in on that?
Well, that was, that was, a lot of that was fundraised.
This is our piece. It sits right on our campus.
It would be hard for us for me.
I, I think the answer to your question is, goes to Lauren's exhibit of last meeting where she said, we're going to not increase the debt side payments, principal and interest to the community by more than three percent a year. So. Right. She's got a formula there that does that. And the way we're going to get to that is we're going to work hard to not make miscellaneous expenditures because they each owe higher. And we are going to transfer all of the interest that we earn on a variety of funds into one pot. And we're going to put the surplus in one pot. And then we're going to use that to, if we borrow let's, let's assume that we could come to some consensus about what the borrowing is. That's more than a million dollars. You just make sure that the hit doesn't come on taxpayers.
Right.
We, we plan ahead on this. We've got, um, one thing that I'll bring up and we get back to the capital improvement budget is the fire truck. This, they've got a million dollar fire truck. They all look great over there, but one of them is twenty-five years old. And so to get a new one, three years to wait for it, you know, the cost is exorbitant. I think if we plan ahead the way this guy did from, um, ailers, we pay cash for that kind of thing because we we take our interest and we pool it. We don't keep putting it away on miscellaneous stuff and, and and as soon as I say that, of course, it makes it harder for me to argue that everybody ought to have a computer here. I recognize that. But, um, I, I think that we, we bring plenty of discipline to the table, this group. And this is doable. Borrowing the money and not increasing the amount on the share on the taxpayers by more than a prescribed amount. And her number is three percent, twenty-five, right?
Fifty thousand a year.
Yeah, that keeps it within bounds, but you got to subsidize it. You got, when the thing goes up, you got to feed it over here to make sure that you didn't do it. I have confidence we can do this.
Sounds like we moved on with C I P.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Yeah, thanks.
Nina.
Go ahead.
All right. Um, so starting on page twenty-two of the package. So based on last year or last year, last, uh, meeting discussion, I made some updates to the capital improvement plan. Um, so I have kind of listed out in the discussion of this memo. Number one is the library contribution that we were just talking about. Um, Goff had expressed interest in increasing the village contribution. Um. I think some numbers were thrown around. I increased it to two million in the C I P. That's obviously a draft number. We can revisit that. Uh, but that would, um, basically update the library fundraising effort to need to be one point five four four million for a total project cost of three point five million dollars. Um, so what that does to, uh, our debt financing, so I guess I wanted to mention as well. So we have a debt service fund currently.
Lauren, can you tell me what Patreon?
Twenty-two.
Got it.
We have a, a debt service fund currently that has a hundred and thirty-two thousand sitting in there. Um, and we've talked with our financial advisor and he had kind of advised that can be kind of a a way to gap finance if we want to keep our levy, debt service levy at a certain amount each year, like we're talking about, increasing it by fifty thousand a year. So if we add, if we increase the library contribution to two million, that would require increasing our debt service levy by seventy-five thousand per year. But what we can do is use that debt service fund to minus that down to fifty thousand a year. So if you look on the second page of the memo, I have it kind of listed out here. So with that library, in twenty twenty-five, we would need to increase the, the amount we're paying on debt by sixty thousand dollars. But if we apply ten thousand of that debt service fund, we're at that fifty thousand benchmark. And so that would mean a twenty-five dollar tax increase on a three hundred thousand dollar home. Then you move on to the, you know.
You're talking two million, I, the two million.
Yes. Yes, correct. So this, this would fund the entire, yes, correct. This would fund the current draft capital improvement plan that I have in your packet. So this plan funds what I have currently drafted. I know that's confusing. So we have a plan to fund it if you want to do this plan. So again, so then in twenty-six to fund the twenty-six or the twenty-five, um, you know, things that we borrow for, we'd have to increase our debt service levy by seventy-five thousand dollars. But we'd apply the debt service fund and that would be a net levy increase of fifty thousand. Which is a forty-four dollar, uh, increase on a three hundred thousand dollar home. Does that make sense? It's hard to explain this. But at, at the end of the day, like Goff was saying, we're really just trying to keep our amount of property taxes that we're paying towards debt increasing at a a standard level, you know, so it's not going up and down each year. It's just steadily going up. And that allows us to add some more projects in and also add in flexibility into our borrowing each year. And it lets the residents have a better tool for planning, keep the costs, so we don't have these highs and lows and these low lows. Right? So, um, if you go to page twenty-four, this is Eller's kind of full analysis of it. And I pulled the numbers I provided in my memo from this. Um, so if you're curious and getting into, pull into the numbers, it's there. But then if you go to page twenty-five, this is the draft capital improvement plan. And you'll see, I apologize, this is kind of small print. But you'll see, so you'll see the, you know, the new water reservoir is, is, uh, scheduled in twenty twenty-four. Um, Candy Cane Park is also in twenty-four. The water utility truck, and then I have that's memorial ball field fencing. So that's all scheduled in twenty-four and our plan would fund that. And, and so on and so forth. Um, so you'll see currently, so under twenty twenty-six, we have a new public library construction. I have a total project estimate of three point two million. The general fund, so village contribution would be that two million. And then the rest would be, uh, grants and donations, one point two million. That also would be to say that if by that point, if we adopt this plan and the library cost goes up higher than three point two million, the village contribution needs to stay at two million in order to keep this steady. Correct. Yeah. And there, you know, if we pursued the USDA loan, like Goff was kind of saying, that would maybe allow Yeah, and there, you know, if we pursued the USDA loan, like Goff was kind of saying, that would maybe allow us to give more. Towards the project because it would keep debt service levy about the same. Cause it'd be a forty-year loan versus a twenty-year loan.
What, what are you budgeting for interest for twenty, in our twenty twenty-four budget? Isn't it like twenty-five thousand or something like that?
No.
Was fifteen less or five and then you went to?
Oh, oh, interest for revenue. Uh, fifteen thousand.
Right, and we're going to earn over three hundred and fifty thousand. We've got five percent as roughly as our rate. We've got seven million dollars now. You can't, not everything is going to earn money.
No, but we cannot take seven million dollar number. That includes utility loans and we cannot, we cannot.
I understand.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't change the fact that the business as a whole is earning three hundred and fifty thousand. A part of it goes over to utilities. So that doesn't all come here, but we get surplus as well as a big chunk of that money comes here. You have to draw the, and there are some funds where we have to keep the interest in there. But by and large, we can manage that money.
I mean, the utility is, of that seven point five million, the utility is the majority of that chunk and we shouldn't even be considering that interest in this conversation. So I get what you're saying, but I don't want to confuse anybody to think that seven point five million dollars in just the village side of interest that we're collecting off. We do not. We don't.
Agreed.
And so.
You know, you're gonna, you end up doing the same thing on the utility side, which is applying that interest in a, in a. Why, remember, he says at some point your cash reserves get up high enough and then you can make different decisions of what you're doing. It's, it's all about managing that cash to those reserve questions.
Right, but I don't want anybody to get confused to thinking that we can start using utility money to fund a general fund project.
Kelsey, the only thing I want us to do is to segregate whatever it is. Plus the surplus from any one year so that we know what's in there. Right now, I don't know what's in, what that number is. We ought to have, we ought to be able to know that every meeting, what's in that reserve.
We've talked.
Right.
So thank you, it's enough to be done in a minute. Don't, I understand it's complicated from your point of view.
So as part of the budget publication, we had to go through and figure out what all of our different fund balances were. And it's actually a much more complicated process than you might think. It's not broken out in our finances. Uh, but we've talked about maybe working with our auditors to have a better idea of what those fund balances are and that will give us a better idea. On a semi more regular basis, what our general fund.
Correct.
Service.
And that's the, the general fund. And I just want to make sure that we are sticking to the general fund.
So where's this three fifty that Goff mentioned? That's not the three hundred and fifty thousand here.
Well, he was taking that five percent instead of millions.
Right, and, and that's what I want to be very, very thoughtful. We are making five percent on seven point five million, but a good chunk of that is utility money.
So, and let me.
What did you guys think of his statement that reserves ought to equal six months? Of expenses?
Or what was?
Plus one year of debt financing?
It's, it's.
No, and he's talking about the utilities. He said you ought to have reserved that, that number, those dotted lines.
Right, it was six months plus one year of debt service. Yep.
Right, uh, you can argue whether it should be four months or six, but he's on, he's got his eye on the ball with that. That's the kind of reserves that you have. You can, you can't. You can't anticipate everything, but you can set aside reserves.
Right, right. I agree with that.
So what I think we need to see is. Somehow separating out that. The monies that actually are in the general fund that are.
Yeah, we have that. We've done that. We've presented it. We have an, we have.
So I don't want to.
Yeah, we've shared the unrestricted, our open assigned, uh, fund balance as of the beginning of this year. So those come out in our audited financial statements. Um, we can. Get pretty close to where we're at throughout the year, but using that end of twenty-two number, beginning of twenty-three number is the audited number. So that's the number that's. Which is safest to go off of. We know what that number is. We've shared it. Um, we've kind of done some calculations to show that we're approximately at this, that's this point. And as Lauren mentioned, we have this budget publication that will be published next week in the paper. It's a proposed budget for next year, but it does show what.
So if I.
Estimating.
If I go back in there.
Right, and you'll also be able to see in that budget publication the estimates for the end of twenty twenty-four, which is incredibly hard to do. It's crazy that state statute requires estimates being published, but they do, so that will be in the paper next week. And that will break out general fund, utility, et cetera, et cetera.
I think. For sake of everyone's time, I, I do think that talking about what we do with our interest is important and I think we should set some policies around that. Uh, for the sake of this discussion, I think it'd be helpful if we. Can agree on what the projects are that we want to fund and then we'll continue to think through how we fund them. Um, you know, that's part of this discussion, but this. You know, capital improvement plan is an evolving document. You know, we'll revisit this every year. We'll make adjustments. But this is a good kind of planning document for us for the next five years. Where are we going? What projects do we want to fund and how are we going to do it? Uh, so. I, yeah.
Well, you did it just right. That's exactly right.
Yeah, so any other comments on the CIP, especially on the twenty twenty-four projects? Because that will happen next year, so it's important to make sure we're all on the same page on that specifically. So it's the water reservoir, Candy Cane Park inclusive playground. Uh, a new water utility truck and, uh, that's ball field fencing. Uh, and I'll just mention that, you know, the water reservoir and the utility truck, those will be funded by the water utility, uh, through. The rate increases that we just talked about. Um, and then the Candy Cane Park and that's, uh, ball field fencing would be funded by that, um, debt service levy, so property taxes.
And what you saw in that levy limit where she presented in the first budget workshop, that debt service number includes the increase for those two projects that are funded by.
I know Cheryl wanted to speak on the side of the next, really forgot.
Well, if Goff has a question, then we'll let Cheryl speak.
There, there are two, two items here, uh, come out of the general fund, the railroad street stormwater pipe. And you got, uh, roughly a third, maybe a little more coming out of the general fund. And the other one is the highway sixty-nine. Why aren't, why are, I mean, I, I, if it's railroad street, I understand railroad street needs repairs anyway, so that's why you're doing it that.
Yeah.
But why are, why are, why is the. Why are the taxpayers paying for the replacement to highway sixty-nine? Why isn't that all? Waters doing, you know, why, why isn't it all over on the utility side rather than part of us and part of them?
Cause when we tear up something like that, we're often making improvements to other utilities or to the road itself. And so these are broken down by our village engineer and he lets us know what are utility related expenses versus what would be general fund. So fixing the road, fixing sidewalks, things like that would be general fund.
I, I understand the rationale, but if it's highway sixty-nine, that ain't us.
Well, it's our, uh, sanitary sewer.
I understand that, so why isn't it all on the, on the utility? Is what I'm asking.
Because it's not all utility related expenses. There are some non-utility related expenses in that project.
Like what? Fixing the road?
Fixing the road.
Not highway sixty-nine. I. I don't know, Joe, do you have any other? I can find out exactly how that was broken down.
I don't need a specific answer. I'm just wondering when, with some of these things, they seem to creep into our budget when they really ought to be utility budget. And maybe there are some things that are going the reverse, you know, in which case maybe it all levels out. It's just a question I had.
Yeah, and Pat's really good about breaking out what should be utility versus what should be general fund. He wouldn't try to put. Sanitary related expenses onto the general fund if it didn't have a reason, but I can find out.
Well, I plan to. Be agree with Goff, if we're putting the sanitary resort or whatever it is, about sixty-nine and tearing it up. To put the road back the way it is.
It's not a cross, it's a long.
Oh, just a long.
Terrible. It doesn't cross the only one spot on sixty-nine. It's, it's going along all the way from eleven, all the way down to our plant. That we need to. Work on it.
So basically we just, they end up putting it in and then reseeding it?
And bigger. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but when we're doing that, there's some other utility. Related project that I don't know what that is, but that's how we broke it down.
It's your responsibility to replace ditch lines, everything like that, so. And the state will be here to watch it.
Those LA. I can pick them up and give you a little presentation or whatever and then.
Thank you for waiting.
Well, I don't know that I have much of a presentation, but I just want to make sure that I shared an update. So last month in my key here, I talked about. The fact that our organization, Newglers Cares, applied for grant dollars. Um, and that, uh, I'm here to tell you that we were awarded eighty thousand dollars from a nonprofit foundation in the state. Which is to remain anonymous, um, although Lauren and I had a conversation, uh, with them. And their representative, there are two contingencies to their mon, money, however. The first is that the village provide matching funds, so eighty thousand dollars, which is what you see in the capital improvement plan. And that the second caveat is that we make the park ADA and handicap accessible, so inclusive. Um, which for a community our size, right? Uh, is not something that most other communities, um, of our size have been able to afford and to fund. So we are asking the village to commit the eighty thousand dollars. Um, the eighty thousand dollars that we would get done from the foundation. And then the estimated, uh, cost, total cost of the project. Uh, is around two hundred thousand. Our organization, Newglers Cares, would raise the balance, whatever that gap is. So we're thinking somewhere between twenty and forty thousand dollars roughly, depending on how the final budget comes in. So that's based on preliminary plans, um, only. But I know that we had a listening session last week, um, with some parents in the community that have special needs children. There is a lot of support there. Um, we had our celebration, um, this last Sunday for the Candy Cane Hill fundraising project. For the seventy-five thousand dollars that we raised there. We had really great attendance, um, and a number of people came up to me during that, uh, party and pledged their support. Not only individuals, but businesses and other civic organizations, um, have given me, you know, indications, verbal indications. That they will support, uh, this project as well. Um, what I basically told them is that our organization won't be fundraising in earnest for this project until the village commits their eighty thousand dollars. So if the village fails to do so, you're walking away from that hundred and twenty thousand dollar contribution between the foundation's money. And the money that our organization would raise. So I think there's really good momentum around this. There's a lot of support in the community. Um, and if you want, your November seventh coordinating, I will build a wardroom, uh, with people who will come out and speak in support of this project.
With your ADA, this, uh. This is for, uh, over by the shepherd of the hills there, that, that Candy Cane Park, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um. Is there requirements for parking with that?
So we have talked about that and we would likely need to, um. You know, where the road goes, where the basketball court is there.
Is that private there?
Half of it is, half of it, it belongs to the village, half of it belongs to the landowner.
Do.
So on the half that belongs to the village, right, we could potentially extend that up now because as soon as the land transfer occurs for Candy Cane Hill. The village will own the rest of that land and we could extend the parking there to make at least one, if not two, handicap accessible spaces there.
Okay. That's awesome.
Yeah. Um, and I guess it's just the last thing that I want to, you know, point out to people. So in your two thousand eighteen nineteen comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Uh, Candy Cane Park was identified as a high value, high priority, short-term need for park replacement, park equipment replacement. And here we are, you know, going into twenty twenty-four and talking about the twenty twenty-four budget. And you have a real opportunity to make it happen. This year.
Um. What's good, sorry, going back to the parking part, is that, is that going to be us to extend that, that driveway there?
It would be incorporated into the project costs.
Into the project cost.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause like, you know, I don't, I don't know when we're doing our next road projects, cause that would be what I'd look at for, anyways, yeah, that's good, that's good. Thanks.
Is, is the current plan that have the. Rubberized surface on the whole playground or is that not on the table right now?
So the current, um, plan has it on the entire surface. Uh, which is what. A number of the other parks that we've talked to, the, you know, Dane County Parks, the Platteville Park. The ones that, uh, truly have inclusive playgrounds, they have suggested that it be for the entire surface. Um. What we've heard from people is that where there are typically more issues is when you have smaller poured pads. There's more opportunity for, um, decay and vandalism. Vandalism has been the biggest issue. So one of the other things I talked to Lauren about, you know, based on the lighting in that neighborhood and the way that the current street light, uh, faces. Out to the, um, you know, road. At night, Candy Cane Park is pitch black. And, um, you know, perhaps some of the issues that had occurred right at the park. Um, could have been potentially vandalism related. I don't know that for certain. But having more lighting facing the park would be beneficial, cause in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
With houses completely surrounding it, if there was lighting there, I can tell you that the people in that neighborhood. Uh, would have chased those kids off because, you know, I've chased. Kids off when I'm out walking my dog, so.
Yeah. Oh, definitely, that, that has to be with.
Yeah.
With it. For sure.
I mean, I think the issue is, right, the existing playground equipment is in significant disrepair. One of the slides had to be removed because it had a huge hole in it. If you look at. And, and so it's boarded up right now and, you know, Lauren had said they had looked into replacing it, but why would you put a new slide in if the equipment as a whole. Needs to be replaced. So, I mean, if you look at the funding that between the foundation and our organization would provide recovery. In essence, sixty percent of the cost. So the village's investment in this is only forty percent. And it's doable. It's a doable dollar amount in your twenty twenty-four CIP.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you.
You got any more on the CIP or? Well, to facilitate, uh, I would move to accept the CIP plan for twenty-four, twenty-eight to get the discussion going faster.
I'll second it. Amendment. I'd like to see, um, you delete intersection cams from your future list.
They're very young.
Got in there, Billy Toll and Park, that strikes me as appropriate. Strikes me as not appropriate that we're spying on our neighbors. At intersections, because that's all where the bars are and the restaurants.
We could do that in the future without an amendment now. I mean, that, when that comes up.
I appreciate your comment, Goff. Let's focus the discussion on the five-year plan. Um, cause I don't know if there's agreement amongst village board members on where they want cameras and this will be in the future anyway.
Right.
So.
We will discuss it.
I want it on record that I am opposed to it.
Okay.
You are.
Include that.
And use the term spying on our citizens. That's what we're doing, Roger. You sit out there with cameras recording who's going in and out of talkers. That's a terrible thing to do.
I don't.
And you know, it's.
But I don't, I don't think, no, I don't, I don't think, number one. I don't think, yeah, that was the, but number two, what, number two. This is a matter of, of security. It's not uncommon. Uh, in any of our urban areas. We have had. Doomless incidents where. Cameras, they might not have prevented it, but they would have certainly led to. Uh.
You're talking about the wall? Talking about the wall?
Yes.
When they tore up the wall?
Yeah, that's.
That's just the cost.
That's one.
Sure. I mean, government has did everything we do and we have that opportunity here. Roger staring me down, wishing I would shut up.
Okay, so I just want to confirm, I want to confirm that I have this correctly. I have Larry motion to accept the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight capital improvement plan. Goff seconded it with an amendment.
No, no, the amendment is separate.
Okay, so you're seconding that?
Yep, yeah, and then I, then I make a motion to amend our cam, um. Well, we have a second.
So we have a motion.
We gotta wait till Mike gets back.
But is there open for discussion or this is it?
No, we have more than motions to discuss.
Yeah.
A motion to approve. The twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-eight.
We have a motion and a second.
Plan, right?
Yeah, discussion.
That's your motion, right?
Yeah.
And we have a second.
Yeah, we have a second.
So this is a motion to discuss.
We don't vote until.
A motion is always discussed.
Yeah, yeah.
A motion is made and seconded and then it's discussed.
You're not supposed to have a discussion until you second the motion. That's when the discussion.
After Goff's comment, I was looking for that.
So we have a motion on the table to amend.
Well, no, no, no.
We got to do the first.
You seconded Larry's motion.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Period.
Okay, that was.
Yeah, and then I. Yeah, and then I moved to.
Just hold it. No, you can't hold it.
I can. Why can't I amend?
Okay.
Okay, yes, you can.
One thing.
Okay, so you're gonna, you're gonna make them, you're gonna amend the motion?
To take on intersection.
Motion.
Yeah, well, man. It may not have a second.
The motion, right.
But I'm, I'm, I wanna be on record as being opposed to spying on our citizens.
But this is going down the road. This could be.
I understand that. I don't want to be tired of having it written down.
I see.
Yeah, I, I get.
So I have a motion by Larry to accept the twenty twenty four through twenty twenty eight capital improvement plan with a second by Goff. Immediately following, I have a motion by Goff to amend. By striking the intersection cameras and noting that that would be spying on our citizens and that's where I'm at.
Okay. Discussion?
Well, if, if there's.
Second on there.
If there's no second on that, then. That motion dies. But it should, it'll still be on record.
Yeah.
So on that. All of this.
That's not you?
Mm-hmm.
And this, no, but yes. Well, it'll be in a minute.
No, I got.
We can put it on the front of Village Hall.
We can like, get the picture, yes.
All of it. No, we felt the moment. And you started to discuss.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a second on Goff's amendment?
Yeah, there are twenty nine, thirty, thirty one. No.
No. Oh, okay, the amendment fails. So back to the original motion. So now we have discussion on the original motion about accepting the CIP for twenty twenty four through twenty twenty eight.
I'm sorry, Lauren, but uh could you go into a little bit more detail here for me? Uh, sorry, trying to cross reference it from last. Here too, um. So we're, that levy increase that you're talking about going up to from fifty thousand to sixty thousand for twenty twenty five. And then to twenty twenty six going to seventy five thousand. However, we're applying that an extra, so in twenty twenty five, we're gonna take out. Uh, levy it to sixty thousand. And then we're applying ten thousand of it. Uh, to, to services, to debt services.
Debt service fund.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, this account that has money that we can apply to our levy increase.
Yeah.
And we can keep that, the property taxes down for residents to only be fifty thousand dollars increase.
And that debt service fund, we can only use on debt service projects. So I think, I think what has happened over the years is we, so we have the budget for special assessments and revenue every year versus our debt payments. And I think over the years, there's accrued extra revenue in there because we received more special assessments in that given year than what we've budgeted for. So we have a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars of unrestricted money in debt service right now. The kicker is you can only spend it in debt service. So when I file that levy limit worksheet with the state, what I can do is instead of filing that we need seven hundred thousand dollars to cover our debt for next year. I can file that we only need, you know, six hundred and ninety thousand, however much of that debt service that we'd like to use. So that way the taxes are only increasing for the six hundred and ninety thousand and will apply some of that surplus. That makes sense?
Okay, so we are, we're essentially taxing the citizens more, or putting into a. Not a slush fund, but a general fund for tax.
No, we're not, we're actually taxing them less than what is needed because we have this, we have this fund sitting there that has a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars sitting in it. So instead of taxing them with full seven hundred thousand, we're only gonna tax them six hundred and ninety thousand and we're gonna use a hundred thousand dollars out of that hundred and thirty two thousand dollar fund. So it actually is decreasing what we would tax residents to fund the same amount of projects.
Okay.
Obviously, when that hundred and thirty two thousand dollars is gone, it's gone. But we can only use it for debt, so. Ellers recommended that we help use that to steady our tax levy increase.
Okay.
So we're not seeing those big hikes that we've seen in.
Right.
High mountains and low valleys, or how they wanna say it.
Basically, we're gonna get taxed on fifty thousand dollars. If the debt.
Increase.
Increase. If it goes up to eighty thousand, we're gonna take thirty out of that. Uh, fund, so it's only fifty thousand.
Okay.
Over the course of, along the.
Twenty twenty nine.
Until that.
That's one.
The fun.
Okay.
And maybe there could be such a thing where we would have dip into that fund if we don't. You have to go up to that extra fifty thousand.
Yeah, I mean, it depends, it depends on what the board wants to do with the capital improvement plan, but that's why we kinda need a roadmap so we know what we're looking at each year.
Yeah, and, and David Ellers did mention that you're probably gonna need.
Yeah.
Additional fifty thousand increases or even after twenty nine to build in more flexibility for another road project in, say, twenty thirty something, you know? So.
This, this, this is hard for me to project that far ahead in these amount of dollars. Because of what, the potential of what could possibly happen and then we're in a. We're backed into a corner, so. When we have these in place, does that mean these are what we are doing?
No, 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 we could pull any one of these projects on. Oh, you could pull Candy Cane Park.
Those for next year we wanted to.
Okay, so this is just right.
When you pass this today.
Did you get up?
When.
No.
When the village board passes the capital improvement plan. The general idea is the next year is kind of set in stone at that point, so twenty twenty four would be set in stone. But the rest of the years are up for grabs, kind of, you know? You have a general plan and we'll figure out how to finance it, but each year we'll look at it again and say, does this still work for us?
I see. And obviously, the village board wants to take into account too that we don't wanna approve this capital project plan and then have you thinking that I could, well, we're, we'll change it all next year. We just will, we'll approve it for now. I mean, we wanna, we wanna make sure what we're approving is the general consensus of what we wanna do.
Right.
That may change, but this should be a good roadmap for staff to go off.
Right.
Okay. I get it.
And, and the budget gives you this whole framework of decisions that we're making, so it's the perfect time or to decide whether or not you're gonna go into that surplus. Or not.
Right, especially because we do need to know for twenty. Because I have to file that levy limit worksheet by December first.
But can we keep talking about that surplus? It's really not that much.
No, but it, it's enough, it's enough to help us. Fulfill this schedule.
Okay.
And keep a steady increase for our residents instead of doing this crazy up and down that we've done the last couple decades.
There's. That, that's where I'm not in sync yet with staff about where, where the additional monies are gonna come from.
I think she was talking about.
Getting a bonus right now with interest rates being, a couple of years ago, we earned five thousand dollars on the whole seven million, I mean. Maybe we're zero. Now we got a ton, so one of the things we should do is see how long we can prolong that. And one of the ways to do that is to start buying CDs rather than day to day interest rates. I mean, if interest rates do this on the way up, they can do this on the way down. But if we can start parceling some of this money up, we can sustain this long.
Yeah, but it isn't really that much money.
Goes into this fund.
I think Peggy is talking about the hundred and thirty two thousand.
I am too. I want it to be bigger.
Yeah, it's not that much.
No, I want it to be bigger, Peggy. And it's gonna be bigger if we can manage this interest thing because that's an interesting, she was only budgeting fifteen thousand of interest. If you only take half of what we earned this year, that's a couple hu- uh, hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of interest. That we're gonna earn this year. Which doesn't go into the budget, so my idea is that ought to go into the surplus because that's what you use on an ongoing basis to moderate these taxes. You gotta keep that fund. Not sacrilegious, but you, you gotta guard it.
So it does go into the surplus, the interest does, and in fact, the interest this year that was not included in the twenty three budget is helping offset twenty three budget costs. This year for twenty twenty three, we had budgeted thirty thousand dollars to balance this year's budget. We have not even come close to needing to touch that because of the surplus with interest. I think the confusion lies in that the interest that is not included in the budget to help us balance the budget just. Seems to disappear. That's not true. It goes into our surplus. So that surplus and the interest that we're not using is the same thing. It go, it ends up in the same spot. Um, I understand what Goff was saying about with the CDs and prolonging these good interest rates, and I think that's something as. Staff that we're extremely interested in as well. But I wanna make sure that the board is clear that all this interest that we're making right now, specifically on the general fund, that we only budgeted five thousand, but we're making a hundred and fifty thousand. Is going into our surplus to help balance next year's budget, to help avoid having to borrow for things like. Vehicles and smaller purchases that you really don't wanna.
Water remains at very.
Yeah.
So we're using that to make the tax increases. Small incrementals instead of, so that is being used.
Yeah, I mean, it's going into our surplus, so that's where the board has a decision to make with our unassigned unrestricted surplus fund, which we talked about at the last. Budget workshop. Um, there's a few different, you know, ideas that we can work with. Obviously, we have a very healthy surplus right now. That was discussed last year, I think, with others. Um, we have a healthy enough surplus that we can apply some of that and start making some of these improvements without having to borrow. So for example, if we did not have that money in surplus and we needed a new squad, we instead of paying for the sixty thousand dollars out of our surplus or arc bar, whatever we decided to do. We'd have to take out a loan for that, which is not ideal on something that only lasts us a handful of years. Um, so those are the kind of things that we're looking at as far as surplus money goes, one time. Not ongoing expenses. We're not looking at salary and wages getting paid for out of surplus, you know, we're not looking at those. Long-term expenses. We're looking at one-time expenses that we can avoid borrowing for, we can avoid raising levy on. That are good uses of that surplus money, and I think Goff is on the right track about investing and making sure we can prolong these rates. But I also think we just need to make sure the board is at a consensus of what they wanna do with that surplus too.
Yeah, and this isn't the last time we're gonna talk about this. I mean, we don't have to figure out what we're doing with surplus or interest now. Uh, obviously, some of it is baked into our budget, uh, but we'll continue to have these conversations. Um, so yeah, I guess I'll just put that out there. We don't decide everything today.
When you don't live it on a daily basis, it's, it's a lot to consume and to understand before you.
Yeah, and yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion? On Larry's motion, you go off second. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, motion carries. Okay, item F, consideration discussion, twenty twenty four budget workshop. Uh, it's on page twenty eight. I'm getting a headache.
Is this crystal clear?
Yeah. Okay, I have another presentation.
Again, how they can imagine the work that is up there.
Thanks, Ellen.
I'm sorry for the questions.
No, no, of course.
Myself.
Appreciate it.
All right. Budget workshop number two.
Page.
This goes away.
Twenty eight. Twenty eight.
Twenty eight.
Oh.
All right, um, so this second budget workshop will mostly focus on utilities, but I did wanna kind of revisit general funds since we had a couple of changes since our last. Uh, meeting. So our twenty twenty four revenue and expenditures are now budgeted at one point eight million dollars. Um, this includes a change to the fire district budget, which was increased to a ninety three thousand, three ninety seven contribution. Um, that was due to a number of things that increased their budget. Uh, including, I believe they're buying, purchasing walkie talkies. And um, they're getting a payroll service. Um, Goff, feel free to add any other items I'm missing there. Um, but a, a couple other things I wanted to highlight, so we, Kelsey worked on actually making some adjustments to the wage and fringe section. So actually, part of my salary is now, I think ten percent is paid through the tax increment district. So that took some money off of the um, general levy, which um, helped us balance a little bit better. So at this point, we'll need fifty two thousand eight hundred and four dollars from surplus to balance the budget for next year. Um, I included this uh, table here that just shows kind of how the budget has changed from last year to this year for the general fund.
So move.
All right, room tax, so um, fund eleven, uh, just a.
Did you want a second? Uh, is that a motion?
I'm doing a presentation.
Turn around.
I'm doing a presentation.
Sorry. I didn't know you were on, okay.
Yeah. Um, so uh, as just a reminder, room tax is set at five percent of hotel, motel and other lodging gross receipts. And it's broken down between three percent, you give it back to the business owner, twelve percent, that was increased this year, that goes to the village. And then eighty five percent goes to the Chamber of Commerce. Fund eleven just tracks the chamber portion of those payments, so we have revenue and expenses budgeted at seventy thousand. Um, the village portion goes into our clerk fees revenue line in general. Employee payout fund, we have nothing budgeted in this account, but just wanted to mention that it does exist. It's used for paying out accumulated leave for retirement, retiring employees. Um, we usually don't budget uh, in this fund unless we are certain it's going to be used. Our tax increment districts, so number three and number four here, we've got tid three, which is the brewery. Um, in twenty twenty three, that brewery tid generated three hundred and twenty two thousand, nine hundred and forty three dollars of increment. So that, that has a fund balance currently of nine hundred and twenty six thousand, five sixteen. That's minusing out um, our expected expenses for the year, so it's a pretty healthy amount. Um, twenty twenty four expenses, we have four hundred and twenty seven thousand, nine eighty five budgeted. That includes uh, about two hundred and twenty four thousand of debt service payments. Uh, and then we also have a transfer of two hundred thousand budgeted as well. We actually didn't budget that last year. Like we would transfer an amount of money from the brewery tid to the downtown tid, so we just threw in two hundred thousand. Um, as a placeholder there. Um, and then tid four is the downtown. In twenty twenty three, that uh, tax increment district generated two hundred and six thousand, six oh six in increment, which is actually pretty good for the downtown. Um, that has a fund balance of five hundred and two thousand. And um, in twenty twenty four, we're budgeting seventy nine thousand in expenses and that includes forty thousand dollars that goes towards the facade improvement grant program. And that was increased this year as well. We used to give out only twenty thousand and now we're giving out double.
Can I, did you say?
Yeah.
Did you pour in the million dollars that I'm gonna give to the?
We did not, but it's there when we needed.
Okay.
Yeah, we just didn't, since it's not a signed development agreement, we decided not to show it in the budget, but as you can see. We have almost a million just in the brewery and then we have another five, so we're, we're, we're done. We have the million.
And that doesn't, these numbers don't include our increment that we'll get next year.
Exactly, and also another thing to point out too is we did create two new bank accounts, which Peggy and Brother know about, to separate out our ten money.
So it's clear and easy to see what tid three and what tid four have for fund balances. Especially when we get into the situation of paying out that million dollars from the hotel, it'll be very helpful.
I um, I read the notes, but I can't remember. Can you give me an example of a tid three expense and a tid four expense?
So both of them have debt service payments.
Okay.
So tid four or tid three, the brewery is still paying off the brewery.
Fifteen sewer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Fifteen, I think it was, or two thousand five. It was one, it was, it was fifteen, yeah, it was a sewer project.
Okay.
There's a sewer project, so yeah.
So that's still ongoing, okay.
And then the downtown, um.
I, what's the, um, so the downtown is the one, a lot of the. Expenses that aren't in, or in tid four that aren't in tid three are like wages. We have no wages that come out of tid three. Um, we have some other planning fees, um, and then we have a small. I don't wanna misspeak, but it's a small, I wanna say it's a CDA. Meaning development authority loan.
Okay.
Um.
We're here, we're past the period where we can um, generate new expenses for the brewery uh, tid. So all of the existing expenses are either transfers or debt service payments. We can't do any new projects in that tid.
What was your last sentence?
We can't do any new projects in the brewery tid.
Oh. And tid three closes when?
Twenty twenty six.
Okay, thanks.
Sewer utility fund, um. A lot of this, we kind of went over earlier, but uh, twenty twenty four operating income is about one point seven million and same for expenses, so we have a. Pretty much ballot, balanced budget there. Um, just a reminder, we did take out a five million dollar loan this year for the phosphorus removal project. So sewer utility rates were increased um, in early twenty twenty three to help fund that, so. Um, that's why we saw an increase in that um, operating income that you saw in that uh, cash flow analysis. So sewer utility is doing well. Um, storm water utility, uh, you know, as a reminder, this fund's not only storm water projects, but also our street sweeping. And leaf and brush pickup uh, expenses, so we have a projected income of about two hundred and sixty nine thousand and expenses at the same. Um, this will require a fee increase for next year based on the equivalent residential unit, ERU. That's how storm water rates are calculated. We will need to increase that fee from nine eighty two per month to eleven twenty three per month. That would be a resolution at the next village four. This is done every year. We do those ERU calculations. This is done every year. We do those ERU calculations. Um, to make sure that we're collecting enough to cover our, um, expenses. And Beth Keller and our utility office does that for us. Okay? Electric and water, Fund fifty, um, as you know, we are projecting a deficit for the electric utility. So operating income about two point nine million and expenses three point one million. This deficit is due to a rate increase delay, um, which will likely not occur until Q four of point twenty-four at the earliest. So staff have been talking about ways to deal with this deficit. It's, we haven't made any concrete plans because things could change. We could have a year where we get, you know, way more income than we thought. You know, it could be like a really cold winter or something that could bring that up. So it's kind of one of those things where we wait and see and we, uh, you know, continuously monitor the budget and, you know, make a decision on, uh, whether we need to do something to help fill that gap. Um, but I just included some options for dealing with that deficit. We'll, we'll probably include delaying large expenditures, dipping into surplus, and we can also borrow funds if need be. I also want to add that we are still going to be doing some capital projects in twenty twenty four. Uh, we actually have some remaining borrowed funds from the substation project, about a hundred and eighty-four thousand. Um, that can't be used to balance the budget, unfortunately, but it can be used towards, um, some much-needed improvements. Um, so we have a couple of transformers that we have to purchase this year as well as, um, as part of the wet water reservoir project. We're gonna do a three-phase of connection, so that allow for, um, a potential booster station up there too. Um, so things like that, we'll use that money. And then the water utility, we've got six hundred and sixty-eight thousand projected income and same for expenses. Um, as, uh, John from Ellers mentioned, we will need to increase rates, um, to fund the water reservoir construction. And actually, that project will be starting sooner than fall. It'll actually be starting this summer, this next summer. Um, so I'll obviously keep you guys updated on that, but, um, actually, it'll probably, uh, finish in fall of twenty twenty four. So if all things go well. So I know, uh, John Cameron had mentioned, you know, you guys need to work on those rate increases as soon as possible. And I just want to clarify that I've been talking with Ellers and Beth has been working with W P P I. We are on it. We're going to be getting these rate case studies as soon as possible getting done. So, um, I guess no worry on that, where we've, we've, we've already started that process.
What do you anticipate the rates gonna be?
For?
Pick one, uh, electric utility. You're eleven dollars now. What do you think it's gonna be when you go through with your? Electric, you're under two hundred, right? Two hundred thousand negative on the electric.
Right, right. I'm not sure, yeah. I can find out if, um.
When you get to it.
Yeah.
Well, that was a twenty percent increase, wasn't it?
Yeah, well, yeah, and his, his, um, head fund also has had a.
Well, that would put us in a thirteen to fourteen dollar range.
Yeah, twenty percent of eleven dollars. It's a dollar, twenty, yeah, thirteen, thirteen and a half.
Uh, moving on, so, um, capital projects, Fund sixty, that's what we were just talking about with the capital improvement plan. This fund just reflects our twenty twenty four projects. And more specifically, um, the, the general fund, uh, or property tax funded projects. So, um, the two that we have listed for twenty twenty four is Candy Kane Park and that's, uh, Ball Field Fencing. Um, this, obviously, we budget for it, we're borrowing, but we won't actually pay it until the next year when we're paying the debt. Uh, so really, it's just kind of a fund that is our, what we're borrowing out, I guess.
Really, you're gonna fund these with borrowing?
Yep.
Why?
Need small projects to keep that tax levy steady.
Yeah.
Doesn't make any sense.
Ellis has advised us to borrow for something each year so that we're not doing that up and down. If we don't borrow next year, the debt service levy will go down. And then that makes for a much larger increase that next year. So, um, moving on to the revolving loan fund, this is basically the fund that we pay out the revolving loan program, which I think we only have one active, uh, left on that. Uh, but the, the big program that is, it is used for is the facade improvement grant. As I mentioned, we now budget forty thousand for that. It was twenty thousand before. Um, and then I included some pictures of some successful projects that we've had this year. Um, these are all places downtown that have used these funds and are looking better. Um, finally, I know we've talked a lot about general fund surplus tonight, uh, but I did want to bring up, because it's been brought up, um, in the past, uh, what else the Village Board might want to budget with the surplus. Um, so as a reminder, at the end of twenty twenty three, we're projecting a hundred and twenty-nine thousand in surplus. We've already budgeted fifty-two thousand, eight oh four of that towards the twenty twenty four budget, which leaves seventy-six thousand left. The Village Board could choose to either, uh, you could budget additional projects or initiatives with that money, or you could leave it to be added to the general fund surplus. Um, and one option of others could be a bonus for full-time employees. Um, this has been brought up in the past because we are giving a two and a half percent wage increase to employees, which is lower than some other area, some other communities and organizations in the area. Um, that total cost would be twenty-two thousand, one hundred plus fringe benefit cost. Um, if the Village Board is interested in going down that path, we would actually recommend using arcathons and switching out our civic upgrade because there's some utility breakdown issues, but we don't even have to get into that if you're not interested in the bonus. So I guess I'll start there, um, with, uh, this is a potential option for the use of surplus money. And I think that's the last point there, other than next steps are, um, the, the public hearing in November, on November seventh. And also a big thank you to Kelsey and Beth and Department Heads for all their work made together, those budgets. It's a, it's a big project.
It is, it's astonishing.
Or.
Um, I just, can I speak to the bonus?
Yeah, sure.
Um, I called up the school district and they gave a five percent raise, but they don't cover all of the benefits. And one of the reasons they gave a larger raise than usual is because their benefit costs went up. We cover all our.
I do.
Benefits. Um, I'm not opposed to the bonus concept, but I want to know that we ended up, where we ended up on our budget at year end. In other words, if you're gonna make this decision, right now, you're showing, uh, deficit to the budget of two hundred, two thousand, five dollars. And, and I, I know you're telling me there's more revenue coming in, but I just assume make those kind of decisions when we know in fact what happened to our budget rather than mid-year kind of decisions.
Oh, you're talking about the estimated projected for twenty twenty three?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 it's, I mean, that would be worst-case scenario, like, yeah, absolute worst-case scenario, which we.
I'm opposite, uh, Goff. I do not support bonuses because no matter how you, who you give them to, it's not gonna end up being fair. In this case, no part-time workers get bonus. Okay, you can argue one way or another, but I'd rather give it permanent for salaries and give one-year bonuses because it says, oh, you did great this year. Well, we don't have money. I guess you didn't do great this year.
Well, that's.
So I think it's unfair bonuses. I never supported it when I was teaching.
Yeah, I, I just. It is an unfair. I don't support the bonuses. Um, what I'd rather do is, is support your, you know, we did pay twenty percent. So.
You, I mean.
That would be.
I think when you.
Some will cut out on, some, you know, businesses say, okay, we'll give you eighty percent of your, and then increase it this month, but we paid that. I would rather.
I mean, a couple of things on the bonus, I think the main reason we brought that back is because, I think, two meetings ago, the board was very, very, uh, supportive of increasing the cost of living from two and a half percent up higher. And as we talked about earlier tonight, it's not a good financial decision to fund ongoing expenses with surplus.
No, I agree.
Um, which is why I think we would prefer to just increase cost of living to four or five percent and skip the bonuses too. Um, but the issue with that is we don't have that money guaranteed to be here. So five years from now, we're in a much different financial situation. I mean, we can't go to our employees and say, you know, we, I mean, we just can't, so. The bonuses were a safer way to give our employees something. I understand it's not all employees. Um, and that's obviously a board decision on who would be included, but this was just something that we brought because of the board interest in doing something more than two and a half percent.
Didn't, uh, benefits, isn't that like thirty-two percent of compensation? Total dollars over total dollars.
I don't know off the top of my head, but it's a lot. I mean.
It's.
The Village.
That's greater. It's a big amount.
For, for a, so all of our employees will now be on UW quartz health insurance as of next year. We had three on D in this year. They're all switching next year. So if all of those, everybody that's on a family plan on quartz and also has dental, it'll cost them five hundred and ninety dollars for the full year next year for health and dental. That's their premiums and they don't pay any dental premiums. So five hundred and ninety dollars. It costs the Village twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Good deal.
It is. And I think that's, it's important, and we've met with our employees. We've had coffee indolments over chats with our employees to make sure that everybody's on the same page about what is offered here at the Village, not only to encourage new people to come when we have openings, but also to retain our employees that we currently have.
Yeah.
So do you do the same thing the school district does?
I think we do.
They go with high front-end costs?
No.
Because not everybody goes.
No, we don't. We actually have better plan than the school district does.
Nah.
Um, the school district does a high deductible. A lot of them do. This is not a high deductible. So, um, for example, personal example, um, my daughter was in the NICU for two weeks. I did not pay a single dollar for any of it. No deductible, no copay, no nothing. There are very, 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 very few places that I know of, and I worked for the state system. It was, when I worked at the state, my insurance wasn't as good as this year. My sister's a teacher at a local community in this area that has very similar benefits to what they have here, and our insurance is better.
Didn't our insurance premiums go up twenty percent?
What the Village pays. Employees went down.
Yeah, whereas at the school district, they're on twelve, and the differential is quality of this plan.
And I can give you an example. Uh, we had W E A for a long time and paid nothing, no deductible, and there was a, it's a great insurance, but, um.
Was.
But then the districts, uh, cut back and, um, our deductible was eight thousand.
Well, yeah, a lot of people pride themselves on having caught the.
Well.
Cut costs and then covered.
They were trying. Well, they became, if you gather the eight thousand, then you got.
Oh, it usually happens when you run that high deductible, because people defer going in and getting healthier.
Right, exactly.
And they're sicker, and then it's worse.
Right.
That's the path.
It was hard for a lot of the, or the meat.
There are some places that the employees don't pay any monthly premium, but usually those places have hidden up the plans. So we, what we offer here for health insurance is extremely competitive, especially on the local government sector. We've had, we had a much larger community reach out to Lauren and ask how we were swinging this. Um, so.
We're always looking for ways to support employees.
Yeah.
The bonus was an idea, but, um, yeah, they, they helped her.
On this item, she said the only thing she would want was a measure of whether you wanted to do the bonus or not.
Yeah, the rest is just kind of a questions on the budget itself.
And if there's, if you don't see any huge issues, this is what we will go off of to present you with at the next board meeting for the budget public hearing adoption.
Bonus, well, I'm waiting to think, but if you want to go ahead with the, with the, uh, bonus or not.
Sorry, how are you paying for that? Then again, the, the bonus? Because like the twenty twenty four budget, we're, we're still trying to scrape together twenty-four.
Well, we have a, a projected, uh, surplus in twenty-three budget, and we applied some of that to twenty-four to get us the balance. And we have extra funds from that that we could use towards other initiatives. So like I said, on the PowerPoint side, we have like seventy-some thousand that you could use towards initiatives. And so one idea was the bonus, which would come through.
Roll this decision to January, table it until we see how the year came up.
Yeah, I mean.
Hey. It's, I kind of think that, uh, you know, the increase in, the increase in the, uh, health insurance is. Well.
It's. It's, it's kind of generous. We're doing a good thing with that.
Yeah, and I, I have nothing, I, it's nothing against, it's just a matter of.
I also think that our staff has been putting out such a better quality product in the last few years, just now versus the last few years. That they should be looked at and rewarded in some way. Because with what we've had, had going on here within the last, what, six, eight months, I'm, I'm very happy with how, how Lawrence picked up everything here and learned everything. How everything, now all the, the department heads are really coming together. I can see this, the sense of community within this organization.
Really annoying, isn't it?
It's pretty awesome. No, I, I disagree. I, I think it's a truly amazing thing.
I agree.
It's, and with a team like that, working together full steam like that, I want to keep them together.
So could we hold up doing it till?
I don't disagree.
Set the January, and then could we?
It would be twenty twenty four money. I mean, it wouldn't, that, that's the only difference is if you, you do it in twenty-three, it would be part of the twenty twenty-three month goal. The money doesn't go away in twenty twenty-four, but it would just show on the twenty twenty-four audit statements if you did it there versus twenty-three.
We'll be able to have some sort of, uh, projection of our statements, uh, for twenty twenty-three or in like the beginning of January.
Yeah, but yeah, I would love that, but I don't know.
We'll have a good idea of where we're at at the end of the year.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have a good idea as far as getting our audited financial statements.
You'll not be audited.
You won't be efficient, I think, we'll have a much closer.
Oh, yeah, 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 I can, I mean, I, I can just, I can tell you based off of.
So will, will all of your revenue have been in by, uh, December meeting?
Mo, most of it, um, there's a few, there's a few things that come in mid-December, like the New Blair's home pilot. That's thirty, thirty thousand dollars. It's supposed to be paid December first, um.
What, what is that anyway?
It's a, so payment and lieu taxes, the, the home does not pay taxes.
Oh, oh.
So they pay us a pilot.
Oh, I see.
And when this.
I didn't realize that's what it's called.
When this, the side on December first was the date. I don't know why, but that's the date of that thing. It's, so, so a few things like that, but all of our major fundings, uh, shared revenue, street aid, et cetera, et cetera, taxes. Um, that all, all be in by mid-November.
So is that a better route for us to look at? Just, I'm talking.
I'm okay with the, the bonus thing. I'd rather see it from the first of the year to the, you know, from January to December. Just, for me, it'd just be a matter of clarity, but my only question is, uh, who does this include?
It'd be, what was proposed was full-time employees, but that is also a board decision. Um.
Calculated seventeen.
Full-time employees being.
And anybody that's here full-time.
But that includes, uh.
All, utility, library, police, I don't know, but union, non-union, as if they're full-time.
The only ones we didn't include were, were vacant positions.
Correct. We, yeah, we didn't include, there's one vacant public works position that was not included in that count. And, oh, yeah, please, sorry. Please, just use.
And what?
Uh, no, the police, the fifth officer. We didn't include that. We had seventeen was our count. That did not include the vacant public works position and the vacant PD police officer. That included all of their full-time employees. If the board wants to explore, including part-time employees too, um, we certainly can do that. I think the reason we did the full. I think the reason we did the full-time employee is when we were looking at ARPA funds, we only had so much available, and that's what. We could obviously.
No, I I don't.
There's a million ways you could do it, and it's hard to.
If I'm hearing you correctly, the highest-paid employees get the least percentage increase, right? Okay, so um, we're already out, out with this, right? So, but. Next year, ask the questions first. I I just, I'm also uncomfortable when with these across-the-board things.
Yeah, yeah, no, we.
I mean, I understand that it's easier to do, I got that, but my best for getting the least, I'm thinking.
We we've talked about that, we talked about it, there's, there's supposed to come to both because people who are paying the least are also getting less. In the two and a half percent increase, and so it's kind of a way to give them some more. Yeah, and the only reason we we were, for lack of a better term, thrusting this at you now is because it was brought up a couple meetings ago. And with the budget getting approved at the next meeting, we wanted to at least get this on the table for you, but it isn't something that by any means you need to rush into. It was just, we wanted to make sure that we followed up on your request to look into seeing what else we could do for employees.
And there are a lot of other communities that everyone belongs to, that have gone through here, COVID, all that stuff too. Those here never did. But we've, but we've also been very generous with our employees, as opposed to a lot of other communities.
You don't keep employees by giving them bonuses, keep them by giving them good salaries.
Salaries and benefits.
That's right.
Um, I I would like, like I said, I'm, I'm good with this, but I'd rather see it January one to December thirty first. I don't know, just for a matter of clarity, I guess.
Right at the end of the year, happy new year, new year bonus.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, we can, once, once we hit those January meetings, we can, I'll have a much better. The issue with end of the year is, it's not truly the end of the year on the number thirty first for us, our end of the year is actually like January first, so.
Whatever the years are.
Look at this, just decreasing paper by each of us.
Yeah, no kidding, Chromebook. Then I'd have to order one of those.
That was a problem, brother. That was on an agenda.
I'm out of phone. Well, let's keep, you gotta get moved forward, it's gonna be ten o'clock before we get, so what do you wanna do with this one, Lauren? Is uh any action at all?
It sounds like the board would like to table the bonus for now.
Okay.
So no action taken?
No action.
No action.
Taken, so, when do you want us to bring it back? December, January?
I think, if we're looking truly year-end, I almost think it almost seems to even be like a February thing, because. If we, if you guys truly want a, I won't have all my bills in for twenty twenty three, and I usually get them in like mid-January maybe. Depending, if you wanted accurate hundred percent, this is what we ended up with in twenty twenty three. If you're, if you're, you just want the majority of it, then yes, the beginning of January is fine. Understand what I'm saying?
I think that kind of the person golf, because he's the one that really wants to see the numbers and see if that's like. I I don't, I don't need absolute certainty, I mean, if if, if you're, you know the other's gonna come in, we can see whether we are, where we are.
We'll bring it back to January at some point.
Okay. Okay, item G, consideration discussion development agreement with the New Blair School District for primary school and athletic complex publicly. That's on page fifty eight.
Yeah, this is pretty straightforward, um, so this is for, the school is, as you know. Building a primary school addition and athletic complex is part of that, it will include uh public improvements, so sidewalk, urban gutter. Um, those kinds of things, and so often when municipalities and another entity are. When another entity is doing public improvements, we sign a DA that just kind of outlines how that would work. And so that's basically what this does. Um, a couple highlights of this include making sure that the school district will reimburse us. For um engineering oversight, reconstruction oversight of this project. And there's also some uh electric utility boxes that will have to be moved for the sidewalk on Second Street. And the uh school district will be paying for that as well. Uh, other than that, this is a pretty straightforward kind of template DA that would be used for this type of project. Uh, but I'm happy to answer any other questions about it.
What, what did you say, we're paying for sidewalks?
No, we're not paying for anything.
Okay, fine.
Yep.
I didn't see anything in here, I was just curious.
They are reimbursing us for uh engineering costs, but they'll, they'll be constructing and paying for sidewalk and other public improvements.
This is just permission.
Yeah, it's basically outlining how that would work, yeah.
I move to approve the development agreement with the New Blair School District.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hopeless, most of you carried. Item A, it's consideration discussion, resolution twenty three twenty four exempting the minis. Excuse me, municipality from paying breed county library tax, and we do this every year.
Yeah, for the past several year, we are eligible for the exempt, and so therefore we pass the resolution to the exempt, Kelsey and I.
I move to approve resolution twenty three twenty four. Thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
We need a second. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Uh, down to personnel and finance, consideration discussion, this is twenty three twenty six for wage increase for public workforce labor. Lauren?
Yep, this was a recommendation from Personnel and Finance, um, we had a meeting uh two weeks ago about it.
Seventy one.
Yes, page seventy one, um, so this would increase Ken Wolf's uh wage uh from twenty forty to twenty three dollars. Um, we have some extra funds, given that Chuck uh was hired and he was at, I think, twenty six dollars an hour, twenty five. Um, and so, given that Ken is kind of stepping into that number one public works uh labor position. We thought uh a wage increase for him uh would be uh really a good move for public work department.
I move to approve resolution twenty three.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Hold on, I just, just for the record, I wanna ask uh.
He's excellent.
Wanna ask Joe. Go.
He's a good guy.
You're fully approved. With this.
Yeah. We probably don't do something.
Okay.
You were looking at the only street guy. So.
But, it's all I wanted.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold on, most of you carried, and all I wanna say, we had a nice reviving ceremony down. Uh, new substation last Tuesday, but we had one board member show up.
That's what happens when you put it in the middle of workday.
Yeah, I know, I I know you work.
Yeah, that's, I've worked as well, structured three times in order to.
Your job is to do all the apple polishing.
You don't get paid enough for that.
We're adjourned.